Okay, welcome to the October 8th, 2024 meeting of the Gloucester City Council. I would like to announce that this is a public meeting of the city council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications and public hearings to be recognized to speak. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the city council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minute shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the city of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. I'd like to announce the names of the city councilors. We have Ward one councillor Scott Memard. We have councillor at large Jeff Worthley. We have Ward three councillor Marjorie Grace. We have councillor at large Jason Grow. We have council vice president and Ward five councillor Sean Nolan. We have Ward two councillor Dylan Benson. We have councillor at large Marjorie Gilman.
Hillary. For time. It's a charm.
What's wrong with me? You're Marjorie from here now on. You better change your registration to vote. And we have Ward four councillor Frank Majota. And I am the council president and councillor at large Tony Gross. And we have, in the audience, we have the mayor, Greg Verga. And I did. And we have our CFO, Connor McCorkle. Online from the Health Department, we have Chelsea Goldstein Walsh, who we'll hear from. And we have our city clerk, Grace Poirier. And I don't see Eric. Oh, well, yeah. I don't think he has any, he doesn't have anything in front of us. He does? Oh, the fire, that's right, he's got the, so Eric Smith is also joined us, the fire chief. And now we will have the flag salute. Led by councillor Memard.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Next order, business, madam clerk.
Oral communications.
The public shall have an opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the city council, make their statement without debate, and the city council will refer matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak under oral communications? Name and address for the record, please. No.
Hello? Patty Amorall, 14 Myrtle Square? Okay. Good evening. I am in front of you tonight to ask a few questions about the new lights that were purchased for the new Green Street Park construction project. I want to assure you that I've reached out to my ward councillor, Dylan, and to my at-large councillor, Jeff. Before I came to stand before you, they were not able to answer my questions. As one of the many who gave my heart and soul to the rehabilitation of Matos Field, I am in dismay that I'm not able to access where the three-year-old Matos Field lights that cost our taxpayers $190,000 plus many hours of volunteer work are. A public records request from our clerk's office that I have right here showed me that the Matos Field lights were, and I quote, "Determined that the equipment was not dissembled properly inconsistent with Musco protocols. As a result, the existing warranty was voided and new equipment is required." My questions are, who authorized the taking down of the Matos Field lights knowing that the warranty would be voided? Why was this done without some oversight? They cost so much money, my goodness. Were the lights resold? Were they recycled? We know how much money, I just dropped off an air conditioner the other day to a guy. We can recycle these things. The new lights cost our taxpayers $94,800. Almost $95,000. It's a really lot of money. I find it irresponsible and would like to know the answer to these questions. Seeing the lights in a picture in the Gloucester Daily Times on a flatbed truck was just one of the images that haunts me. There are more that pertain to private Matos, but we will save that for another time. Please. I guess that's the end of that part of it. I'm not sure if this pertains to anything, but I talked at the 3A communications. Am I supposed to get a letter from the mayor or something after I talk at the 3A communications? Or is that just, you don't get a letter? You only get it if you're standing here? 10 seconds. I don't know, they're whispering to each other. I'm not sure what's happening.
We don't answer from the.
Oh, you just talked to, okay, you just talk amongst.
No, we just, like I read, it's without debate, so.
Oh, so, so who would be answering these questions for me? Because I've done two public records requests and those simple answers are just not there.
It'll go to the mayor, thank you.
The mayor, so the mayor, the mayor who's here right now, you'll be able to answer those questions for me? You'll be able to tell me where the lights are?
Time's up, Patty.
Oh, my time's up, okay. All right, well, I'll give you these papers so you have the trees in front of you so you can read them.
Thank you.
And thank you, and I hope we find the lights. My goodness, they're so big.
I mean, I'd also like to recognize city legal Suzanne Egan also is in the, in the auditorium. Anyone else who'd like to speak in the audience under oral communications? See if anyone has their hand up online. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Catherine Ryan and my address is 17 High Rock. I'm gonna do a comment about 3A, but I'll do another, another one at the next city council. But for right now, about 40A/3A/MBTA Communities Act, multi-family overlay district zoning, councillors Worthley and Grace recusing and complying with state ethics and conflicts of interest law. I was wondering, have all appointed and elected officials, you know, all the city council members, not just those two, the Affordable Housing Trust members, the planning board members, the CPA members, ARPA Working Group, and, you know, consultants hired by the city related to the project? You know, I already spoke about, you know, the consultant hired Eric Calverson by the city of RKJ Associates was, of course, the director at MAPC who was, you know, intimately involved with the parcel scoring that was foundational for this. So I was just wondering, have, have they followed suit all of these conflicts of interest filing or investigation discussions at the state level on their own and then as public filing happened? And the last thing was, some of the comments at the end last time for the 3A meeting chided residents for not staying and hearing the quote-unquote "other side." And I just wanted to say, in fact, many people in this community have been following along and participating even long before some of these appointed and elected officials on these bodies that have these votes. And, you know, I think on, on this, a discussion of this depth and import, everybody is interested in, in giving their comments and participating. And maybe a lot of people are feeling like they're not heard. So I just wanted to say in defense of people that can't always be there or may have been going for years and don't feel like the, the substantial discussion is happening, feel similarly. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else online? Anyone else in the building? Anything that's not on the agenda? Three minutes. State your name and address, please. Not on the agenda. Correct. Find me.
It depends on what you're talking about, private road.
I'm John Machin, I live on One Clearview Avenue.
Into the microphone, please, because that way we have the, a record of it.
Hello.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm John Machin, I live on One Clearview Avenue in West Gloucester. And I'm on a so-called private road. Now, I've lived there for 41 years and up until five years ago, the city was always great at coming and filling in potholes. Not so much coming over and redoing a whole road, but there was always money in the budget for potholes. All of a sudden, it's evaporated. And I'm told by the Department of Public Works that they're no longer responsible for anything on private roads. They'll come by once and fill them in temporarily, and then we have to go through the whole ordeal of going in front of the council and trying to get the roads all redone and from scratch and getting an abatement on our taxes. But we can't get just potholes filled in. A lot of these roads wouldn't have to go through that if they just come and fill in a few potholes every couple of years that showed up instead of letting them go and just ruining the whole streets. We do live in Gloucester and we've been paying excise tax, which I thought was for the maintaining of the road, including private roads. Thought the excise tax that Gloucester charged us went into an account and that would pay for the potholes and stuff. So I don't know where the monies all went. They've always been able to do it. And now all of a sudden, it's become this big, huge thing, the city can no longer afford it. Well, I mean, we're still paying all our taxes and everything else and we get nothing. I, I just don't understand why they can't come up with the money just to do potholes. I understand that they can't do a private road that goes up into the woods a mile and a half. And I understand they can't do private roads as far as coming in and grinding them all up and putting them down new for free, but they should be able to at least maintain them. You know, they came over and did the potholes over on Linwood Ave that comes up. 12 houses use Linwood Ave, which is a private road, and the Abuddas don't want to take care of it. But we have, it's our only access in and out of Clearview unless we get onto Coal Ave. So the city comes over and fills in the potholes the one time, they drive up in their truck, the potholes steep on one side and got dirt running out of the other side, they came, they throw the hot top in it, they don't clean it out, they don't put emulsion down, they don't even give an effort to make the thing so it would go in there and last. So my question is, why isn't this anymore? Why can't the city afford it? I mean, do you have to up the taxes on everybody in Gloucester so you generate enough money to just fill in potholes once a year? That's a major problem. I don't know if you realize that, but it's a major problem. All these roads are falling apart. They were redone during the Sua and just got through paying that abatement. So if we go through this whole thing and pay abatements again, the new roads aren't even gonna last until we pay for the abatement. And it'll be a never-ending thing. But to get the potholes fixed, I don't understand why we can't.
Yet 10 seconds. Okay. Anyone else? Next order, business, madam clerk.
All right, under these circumstances, with David Rylander, we've made multiple attempts to get him to come into the clerk's office, we've sworn in, in before ONA, and this is our second chance at the city council. And at this point, I would suggest that we pull David Rylander as an alternate member, term to end 215, 2027, and I so move.
So there is no motion, no motion necessary. So, sorry, you wasted your, your motion and your second. Next on the agenda, madam clerk.
The consent agenda.
Would anyone, any councillor wish to remove anything off the consent agenda? Entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So, second.
Motion made by councillor Gross, seconded by councillor Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Next order, business, madam clerk.
The October 3rd Budget and Finance Standing Committee report.
Councillor Memard.
Thank you. The Budget and Finance Committee met Thursday night in our conference room downstairs. We have, I believe, seven or eight items for your consideration this evening. The first is a memorandum from our city clerk and an SBT, Special Budgetary Transfer Number 253, requesting transfer of funds in order to pay for workers to staff the early voting period of Monday, October 21st through Friday, November 1st, 2024, and the amount requested is $2,160. And I so move.
Any discussion? Motion made by councillor Memard, seconded by councillor Worthley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Ayes have it, nine to zero.
The second item from our Budget and Finance Committee was a memorandum from our chief financial officer in a 2025 Special Appropriation Number Two, number two, excuse me. And this is for additional work on the walkways and sidewalks outside of the Gloucester Police Department on Main Street, and the amount is $300,000. I'll read the motion. On a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Worthley, Budget and Finance voted three in favor, zero opposed. Recommend city supplemental appropriation 2025 SA Number Two in the amount of $300,000 from the Capital Projects Stabilization Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance Account Number as noted, to the Capital Projects Stabilization Fund, Police Station Courthouse Infrastructure, Paving Account Number as noted. And this is for the purpose, again, of additional paving and walkway work in the area of the police station and the courthouse on Gloucester's Main Street. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by councillor Memard, seconded by councillor Worthley. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, sorry.
Councillor Memard?
Aye.
Councillor Nolan?
Aye.
Councillor Worthley?
Yes.
Councillor Benson?
Aye.
Councillor Gilman?
Aye.
Councillor Grace?
Aye.
Councillor Gross?
Aye.
Councillor Grow?
Aye.
Councillor Majota?
Aye.
Vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Our third item from Budget and Finance was a memorandum from the CFO and a 2025 SA Number Three. And this is to allow the DPW to replace inoperable vehicles in the total amount of $600,000. And the motion is as follows. On a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation 2025 SA Number Three in the amount of $600,000 from the Capital Projects Stabilization Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance Account Number as noted, to the Capital Projects Stabilization Fund, DPW Vehicles Account Number as noted, and this is for the purchase of various replacement vehicles for the city's fleet, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by councillor Memard, seconded by councillor Worthley. Discussion? Councillor Grow?
Yeah, I just wanted, did we get a list of the vehicles they're planning on buying and the timeframe that they're planning on buying them in?
We have not seen that list, and we did request some information from Mike Hale, where these are older vehicles. And this is a deferred list that we're playing catch-up on.
Councillor Nolan?
I did speak with this, with Mike. There's a lot of pieces of equipment in the city of Gloucester that are well above 10 years, their expenditure of life usage. There's decisions to be made on which is the best way to buy, what they need to have. And times come with the amount that vehicles cost now versus what they were a year ago or a month ago. We have some sedans that are 12 years old to 15 years old that are decaying and they need to replace. They, there is talk of some hybrids and different things for some of the executive side of this, but basically it's brunt forcework vehicles that we're looking to do, pickup trucks and one tons. The Highway Department doesn't replace their vehicles just to do it, they do it because there's a necessity of floors falling out of them, they can't pass vehicle inspections. With the enterprise funds, there's a little bit more flexibility, they need a vehicle to go for resources. And I believe it's been seven years since we've done a buy for the Highway Department on this. So it's not like they want to, it's more that they have to, to replace these vehicles for what they have to get the jobs done. And so that's what I've been told, and I've seen the fleet, and I am pretty well versed in fleet maintenance and vehicles. So I do believe this is a, a good thing.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to share some thoughts on this?
Yes, not on the specific vehicles, but I just wanted, this originally was a $2 million request from the DPW Director. And because of the budgetary restraints we currently have, we asked him to whittle it down to the absolute most needed. And the idea was instead of bonding the money, taking it out of stabilization. So that's the idea. Just keep in mind that when things start to look up, there are a number of vehicles beyond these that are in need of updating too. But for now, we try to do it as conservatively as Thank you.
Councillor Benson?
Mr. Mayor, do we have like a ballpark of how many vehicles?
I do not have that, we can have that shipped to you, shipped to you, transmitted to you, once I speak to Mike. I think the first thing was to get the, the vote in hand and then we could determine what we can get for that amount of money.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Councillor Gilman?
Thank you. I would also be interested in knowing how we go about trying to get some resale value on the automobiles and trucks that we're not going to be using. That would be interesting to, to understand. I imagine that, that there is a market out there for these used trucks and cars.
Anyone else?
Councillor Gross?
Councillor Memard?
At Budget and Finance, we did request to Chief Financial Officer McCorkle to inform the council and Budget and Finance Committee of the, the list of these vehicles, the list of identified maintenance programs for these vehicles and replacement schedules so we better understand the details of the age of the fleet. And there was also a question that we haven't had an answer to yet as to whether the DPW has in-house maintenance personnel that take care of ongoing maintenance of these vehicles or whether it, that's farmed out to subcontractors.
Councillor Nolan?
Currently, there is three positions for maintenance on all city vehicles. There's one that possibly may be retiring, and there's an ad to look into replacing that. They have a great maintenance staff, they work very hard to keep all of the city vehicles running. Three gentlemen that are doing it are well-qualified, worthy, and ready for all repairs that may need to be done. So as far as maintenance, I can, I can tell you that they are 100% up to par in this administration, and Mike Hale has worked hard to retain some of the, some of the better mechanics in the city of Gloucester.
Councillor Gilman?
Thank you. So, and because we haven't seen this information from our CFO, is there a hurry-up needed for this particular request? Or could we wait to get that at our next meeting and then vote on it when we have the data? Maybe we ask our CFO or our mayor through the chair?
I would, I think the sooner the better on the vote because, as you know, there's a long lead time on purchasing vehicles, not as bad as the fire apparatus, but it's your call how you want to proceed.
I did get a list from Mike Hale, DPW Director Hale, and I'm only partway through, I'm counting. I got, and I still have more to go, but there's at least 30 vehicles that are over 10 years old on this list.
Can we, can we get that list?
Councillor Worthley?
Thank you. So I asked some of these questions as well at Budget and Finance. It'd be really helpful to have a capital improvement schedule to know what's coming up so we're not surprised by anything. But I also appreciate that this isn't asking for taxpayers to pay more, this is money set aside specifically for these kinds of things. So the $600,000 is money we have allocated for these sort of purchases, and I think it'd be helpful to have the information as soon as possible, but it doesn't change the fact that we're not asking the taxpayers to pay more. In fact, we're probably saving taxpayers' money by using the money that's on hand to purchase these. So I'm, I'm okay with moving forward, but I think it's a very valid request, Councillor Gilman, to have that information before the next request comes. I'm getting nods, but I'm getting a yes on that? Okay.
Councillor Nolan?
I think the point here is that it's an impossible to say what we're gonna do with $600,000. We need to vote it and then find out what they're gonna buy. They can look at the list. You have sedans that may cost 30,000 to 40,000. You have one-ton dump trucks that may cost $100,000. You got three-quarter ton pickup trucks that will cost $50,000. It, it's a variety of different vehicles that come into play. And I think it's, it's tough for Mike to say which ones he wants without putting out a bid and finding out which pool he's gonna go through to grab the vehicles that are most needed for the city. And we can look at this list, and there's a, a list of vehicles on there that have basic guidelines for when they're, they're deemed unusable. And then you also gotta remember that these vehicles drive through saltwater, through floods, through snowstorms. It's not like a regular vehicle that just drives, comes home, stays home during, during bad weather. They're in tough shape, they're driven by multiple drivers, they're maintained full, they, they deal with rust treatments annually. It's just, it's, it's tough. A contractor vehicle is very tough to maintain and to establish on its longevity of how it's going to be.
The first two columns here, the five years, the three years, they're saying five years, three years, three years, five years, seven years, six years, you know. That is, the first column is, I believe it's the American Public Works Association Replacement Recommendation, and the second one is the Federal Government, GSA Replacement Recommendation. So that's all those numbers are over there. They're meaningless to the age of the vehicles. They're just what the government agencies and the Public Works Association recommends that you, how often that you replace your vehicles. But you can see several of them are, you know, not even in the teens yet. You know, there's quite a few that are, and these vehicles get worked. Sorry. Council Gilman.
If it's the will of the committee, I'm okay voting on this tonight. It is helpful to look at this data, and this is, and I appreciate our screenshotting this so we can understand it a little bit better. So if it's the will of the committee, I'm willing to vote on this tonight, but I think, I think it's important that we, that we understand exactly what we're voting on. And I appreciate the fact that you're sharing this with us, Tony, because you had it and the rest of us didn't. So thank you.
Council Grow.
Maybe we can simply ask the administration to provide a list of vehicles that are decided on once Mike gets a handle on what he's spending and all that, and get back to us with it. Great.
I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Discussion, further discussion. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Memhard.
Aye.
Councilor Nolan.
Aye.
Councilor Worthley.
Aye.
Councilor Benson.
Aye.
Councilor Gilman.
Aye.
Councilor Grace.
Aye.
Councilor Gross.
Aye.
Councilor Grow.
Aye.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number four from Budget and Finance is a memorandum from our Regional Prevention Director, Chelsea Goldstein, requesting our acceptance of a STOP-STOP Act grant through the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. And this is in the amount of $240,000. And I believe that Chelsea is present and can perhaps provide some helpful detail about this. We had a lengthy presentation and discussion at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and it's interesting and relevant for us to understand the work that she and her team are involved with.
Chelsea, would you like to give us an overview of this grant?
Sure, yes. Thank you for having me and my colleague David Tucker, who is our youth development coordinator here. David, I can see you're in the car, so be careful. This STOP Act grant is a four-year grant under the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and it's specifically targeted towards initiatives that prevent and reduce youth alcohol use among the population of young people ages 12 to 18 in the city of Gloucester. So the prevention team, which is a part of the Health Department, will be, is very grateful to have these funds, and will be using these funds to enhance the work that we're already doing with our Gloucester Youth Leadership Council, which David oversees, as well as some of our other adult-focused initiatives, all looking at building a resilient community and a healthy community where young people can thrive and have access to healthy coping mechanisms so they're not relying on alcohol and other drugs to cope with life stressors.
Could David add in to Chelsea's presentation?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, Chelsea hit the nail on the head. We've been doing some great work with all the grants that we have gotten, luckily, and using our youth to kind of decide where it goes and how we can truly affect the community. So kudos, and thank you.
I'll go ahead and read the motion. Made by myself, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the city council accept under Mass. General Law 4453A, a federal grant from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration using the science of the positive to implement community-led interventions to prevent underage alcohol use among youth ages 12 through 20 in Gloucester through the STOP Act program. And it's a four-year grant with an annual award of $60,000 and a total grant award of $240,000. The time period for expenditure will be in effect from September 30th, 2024, through September 29th, 2028, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Councilor Worthley.
Thank you. I'd like to just take a moment to recognize the work that the Prevention Department is doing. Chelsea and David, your work is very impactful. You do it kind of quietly because you're very effective, but I just want to turn the volume up a little bit and just really thank you for the work. You're making a difference at a point in some children's lives that is meaningful and makes a big difference for our total community. So I just want to thank you, and this is, there's no match for this grant. This is state money, I believe, and it's going to make a big difference. Keep up the good work.
Council Gilman.
So the isolation that a lot of our youth had to overcome during COVID definitely still has an impact, and I think that this grant is extraordinarily helpful and timely. So I will be supporting this.
Council Benson.
Thank you. Thank you both for your work. And if briefly, could you speak to some example, and examples of what some of the programs currently look like for our youth?
Sure. As I mentioned, our department and our team with David at the helm oversees the Gloucester Youth Leadership Council. There's a high school group and a middle school group, and those groups of youth, it's open to anyone. It's not an application process. It's not like they have to qualify based on grades or some other kind of measure of achievement. It's open to any young person who wants to make positive change in their communities. So both groups meet once a month. They identify the areas that they are most passionate about in terms of wanting to make change. So far, and David, feel free to jump in here, but our young people have identified vaping as one of their priorities for this upcoming year. Other projects or other topics that youth have identified as important to them include mental health, equity and inclusion, driving under the influence and preventing driving under the influence of alcohol and cannabis, as well as some of the messaging that is visible in the community advertising substances and wanting to kind of counteract some of those messages that you don't need to use drugs and alcohol to be happy. And so our youth get to identify those issues and then plan projects and campaigns around those issues to educate their peers and to educate the community and try to make positive change. In addition to those youth-led projects, our youth leaders get training. They participate in volunteer opportunities, and they get to go on quarterly field trips as a fun incentive and as a kind of like a team bonding activity. And we also really rely on our youth leaders to kind of act as a checkpoint for our adult coalition to make sure that some of the initiatives that our adult coalition are looking to implement are hitting the mark, particularly if the audience is youth. So we want to, we run things by our youth leaders to say, is this right? Would this appeal to you? What do you think of this? And then really try to solicit their feedback to make sure that some of the projects that we're working on are going to be most effective.
Thank you. And following up, you talked about vaping as a concern for our youth. Have you looked at, looking at grants specifically around combating tobacco use and moving forward and making the next generation of Gloucester youth a tobacco-free generation? Have you looked at that as well?
Yes, I'm going to let David take this one.
Yeah, so we looked, we looked at one in particular. Our youth definitely very passionate about prevention and preventing vaping, especially with them seeing it so much, and it's consistently around them. One of the grants we actually just applied for with a campaign they're already doing is the 84 Movements Mini Grant, which is a grant for $10,000. It will be huge. Yeah, for the club doing their vaping campaign, social media interviews, kind of answering some true or false questions, really breaking at them.
Thank you both. Thank you, Chelsea. Thank you, David. And hopefully, we can move forward on that and make our next generation be tobacco-free. Thank you. And vaping kills. So thank you both.
Council Grace.
First, I'd like to thank you so very much for your contribution to this community. I think this is a vital, vital thing that you are doing. Alcoholism destroys lives every single day, and if you can just save one kid from going down that path, then you are a success. So thank you.
I too would like to thank you, and as Council Grace said, you know, alcohol is probably one of our number-one destructive drugs that we have, and it's been legal and de-stigmatized, that it's fit into society, accepted. So it's very encouraging that you are looking into this to educate our children to the dangers and help them decide to make healthy decisions and have a healthy lifestyle. So thank you so much for your hard work and for getting this grant.
More discussion?
I had one piece. Sorry. I also think it's important to know that we don't, as far as I understand, have a grant writer. So you got this grant by writing for it, applying for it, and receiving it on top of the work you do every day. So just extra thanks for that work.
If I could touch right there, huge shout out to Chelsea. Chelsea wrote that grant and absolutely did amazing. So shout out to Chelsea.
Thank you, Dave. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
The fifth item tonight from Budget and Finance is a more of a housekeeping issue. It's a memorandum from the DPW Financial Manager requesting payment of fiscal year 2024 invoices with 2025 funds in the total amount of $1,585.12. And this relates to, the motion would be by myself, seconded by Council Worthley. We voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend city council in accordance with Mass. General Law 4464, approve payment of prior year invoices from Cape Ann Truck and Auto Supply NAPA Auto Parts on Main Street in Gloucester, purchased various automobile and equipment parts and supplies in June of 2024 for the purpose of paying invoices, various invoices as outlined by the DPW Financial Manager in her memo dated August 5th, 2024, for invoices dated June 2024, and to be paid with fiscal year 2025 general fund, DPW budgeted funds for a total amount of $1,585.12. Nice move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Council Worthley.
I just want to add to this, which is the city can't make people bill us for work that we've incurred, bills we've incurred. So if a bill comes in late, we can't prepay it. We need to get the invoice. So these are mostly timing kinds of things. It happens every year, and it's amazing that some people can run a business without sending out invoices, but it happens, right? And so this is simply a timing issue, and it makes sense. So I will be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, these bills were all in the last week of June. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
Our final two items from Budget and Finance relate to requests from the police chief Eric Smith requesting acceptance of fiscal year 2025 State 911 EMD grant in the amount of $38,889.56. And on a motion by myself, seconded by Council Worthley, Budget and Finance voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept under Mass. General Law 4453A a state grant from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security of fiscal year 2025 State 911 Department Emergency Medical Dispatch Grant Program for $38,889.56. The grant period is from September 17th, 2024, through June 30th, 2025, and there is no local match for this grant, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion.
I believe Chief Smith is present. If you'd like to invite, ask any questions of him.
Chief Ed.
Chief Conley is not present.
One of our chiefs.
Yeah, the fire chief. This is a police chief. Chief Conley is not here. So I think you or the CFO are going to have to give a explanation of this. No?
Routine.
It is. It's just a routine grant that we get every year that reimburses us for training of our staff, and this one's for the emergency medical dispatch portion of their duties. So that's what this does. This mostly goes to, to pay the staff to attend training, and we get it every year.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
And then our final item is along the same line. It's a memorandum from the police chief requesting our acceptance of a fiscal year 2025 State 911 Support and Initiative Grant, and this is in the amount of $102,983. And we budget voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommending the city council accept under Mass. General Law 4453A this state grant from the Massachusetts Office of Public Safety and Security, State 911 Department of Fiscal Year 2025 State 911 Department Support Initiative Grant for $102,983, and the grant period is from September 17th, 2024, through June 30th, 2025, and there is no local match for this grant, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. This is the same thing, except for this is for the 911 support line, and it's for staff training, for the salaries for staff training. Any more discussion? Council Benson.
For clarification, our dispatch, are they civilian dispatch, or we use police and fire? Okay, thank you.
The answer should be on the record officially, if you can answer for the mayor, I guess. Not to have you get up.
Yes, it's not civilian, police and fire.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
One final item. Budget and Finance received an initial presentation from Nancy Pappas, our chief assessor relating to the tax classification upcoming. And Budget and Finance has continued the tax classification matter to November 7th, 2024, and will be advertised for a public hearing on November 12th, 2024. So heads up.
Hey. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
September 30th, ordinances and administration, standing committee report.
All right, we're going to have to wait a minute for that. September 30th. There are no items, so. Okay.
Items will be taken up under the public hearings.
Got it. Okay. Yep. Yep. So, next order of business?
The October 2nd, Planning and Development Standing Committee Report.
Yep.
Okay.
Grow.
Thank you very much. We had a memorandum for the Harbor Master and the chairman, chairperson of the Gloucester Waterways Board requesting to lease a portion of 65 Rogers Street for winter storage of fishermen's traps. And so we continued the original meeting, October 2nd. We had a site visit on the following Saturday where we saw where the locations of the proposed trap storage are going to be on I-4C2. We had a very productive meeting. We had attendance from fishermen. We had attendance from Fisher Lusito or Harbor Master. And if you would like, I can just read the motion and then I can...
Um, and uh if if we would like, I could just read the motion and then I can explain it from there. That's.
Please do.
All right. So we had a special meeting tonight uh at five o'clock. And on a motion by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Gross, P and D voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommend that the city council authorize the mayor to issue to the tenants of Saint Peters Marina and sixty-five Rogers Street Marina a revocable at-will license for distinct term, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four to June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five for storage of their lobster traps in the location shown on the plan entitled Sketch Plan, October fifth, two thousand twenty-four. P and D Committee of Site Visit Prepared by Harbor Master Chris Lucido with the conditions that, one, each tenant shall be jointly and several severally responsible and liable for removing all equipment, traps, refuse, damaged material and trash from the licensed area at the end of the term. And two, each tenant shall be individually and several severally responsible for keeping the licensed area free from trash, refuse and damaged equipment throughout the term of the license. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Gross, seconded by Counselor Gilman. Discussion.
So on the motion, um, this is being brought to us uh through the uh the Waterways Board in order to facilitate uh some repair of both the walkway at I four C two Marina and also at Saint Peters Marina, where the uh the decking is starting to either go wear away and have dangerous holes or is curling up in the case of Saint Peters Marina. Um, uh, so this is, the intention of this is not a lease. It is the existing tenants of the two marinas will be offered this license that will allow them to store their traps, traps only, in very specific areas that have been outlined by the um Harbor Master. And we have a, we have a map that's been provided to everybody. Uh, this is for a very specific period of time. It's uh for this season only. Um, the city council is limited in our scope to permitting the mayor to issue the licenses. It's going to be an administrative function to actually manage the license and who is going to be putting their traps where, how many, et cetera, and so on. So our focus is simply on allowing the ma- the mayor to issue this license to the tenants of these, both these marinas. Um, it's, it, I think Harbor Master Lucido has put a a good effort into framing out the areas and is prepared to deal with um managing the hundreds of lobster pot and the dozen, two dozen licensees that will be managing their um uh equipment there. And also I think we're we're looking forward to seeing uh some fairly dangerous sections of these boardwalks repaired during the during the winter season. So um we, of course, will have to deal with this possibly again next year, but it's right now it's just for one season. And um that's it. If anybody has any questions, we have Suzanne Egan here to explain any legal legal questions. The mayor's here. Um, I thought we had, we're gonna have Chris here today, but I think maybe we crossed uh messages in that whether or not I needed it. But any questions that can be asked tonight can be answered by the mayor or Suzanne.
Okay. Counselor, Counselor Majota.
Um, I don't know who can answer this. I just have a couple of questions. Would any parking spots be lost during this? How high are the traps? I see like the length and the width of that bow high they're gonna go up. And will there be a sign for safety saying do not climb? Not that it needs to be, but just for precautionary, would be any of that stuff there just for safety?
Um, yes, thank you. So the Harbor Master will be managing how the traps will be stacked. And also he's planning to put up signage there. And he did speak at P and D as to the height of the traps so that it will not cause a safety problem. And also if you see on the plan that was submitted alongside with this, there is parking areas there.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
Thank you. So I'm just said a couple of things I just wanted to mention. Um, having scribed the site visit, we had about twenty very robust questions and they were all answered um at our follow-up meeting at P and D, which was attended by um the chair of the Waterways Board, uh as well as our Harbor Master and Mayor Verga and counsel, our legal counsel, um Egan. There were thirteen um fishermen from Saint Peters, eleven from sixty-five Rogers Street, for a total of twenty-four. And this is for, um, there are no ropes and and only traps. And um specifically, the height is five high, six max.
He said five or six.
Five or six. I just said five high, six max.
No, no, five or six.
Five or six.
Five high or six high, the Harbor Master said, because they do stack them six high.
Okay, thank you. Um, and um the other things I wanted to um to mention is that the parking at Rogers Street, sixty-five Rogers Street will allow for three spots and eight additional ones, eleven spots. And um the city will be clearing out the whole area, which is mostly in the area abutting the building center. And we looked very closely at that, at the site visit. We understand the boundaries. And um our city administration is prepared to take care of that, to get it prepared for the transition. Um, so I think that this is a uh a smart decision for a good reason. And knowing that our new Harbor Master will be responsible for its enforcement, I'm comfortable with moving forward with this. Thank you.
Well, both. That's what, Counselor Grow.
Just wanna point out two things specifically. One is that these are licenses, not leases. Um, so it's a, it's a difference in the sense that they're, we're not granting any long-term or permanent access to this land. And there will be no fee charged to the fishermen for the storage of their uh traps here because effectively they already have an agreement with the city to allow storage of their traps on the pier. So we're just moving them off for the purposes of repair.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Counselor Gilman, for the information. Did we receive minutes from the site visit with the thirty-five questions and answers that we're all all provide? I mean, you said all the questions were answered, but I haven't seen that. Have I missed it? It could be me. I don't.
We had a meeting today in which we reviewed all the uh.
Just before this.
We have something, we have those questions.
Minutes, but it's not right now.
Right. So just from a process standpoint, if I have questions that were asked at a meeting before this meeting that I couldn't get to, it might be duplicative. Is that a word? Yeah, duplicative to ask the same questions, but.
Ask away.
Okay.
Then we'll have the ready-made answers.
Right. I apologize for not making me, making a meeting that happened an hour ago. Um, it would be helpful, and I understand time may be helpful to have that before we are voting for future reference. Um, in the packet we got, I believe, two weeks ago, there was a question about the council having to vote on this property or this part of the property being surplus. Is that part of the motion tonight?
No. Only be if it was a lease.
So it was referred to planning and development. I love the committee. They ask you great work. But wouldn't a license, just like every other license that we have in the city, go to the ordinance administration committee? That's a question first. Wouldn't that go to the ordinance administration committee first?
So, I don't know. I mean, the answer is we, it was referred to us as a, as a land use issue.
Maybe Counselor Egan can answer that.
I'm sure that it makes a difference.
Um, yes, thank you. It was, I believe it was referred to the planning and development committee because it is a license to use land and planning and development committee deals with land use.
Right. But I don't think planning and development committee deals with licenses. So uh I just wondered if it made sense to go to ordinance administration committee. And similarly, even though the projection is that there's gonna, the statement is that there's no charge for this next season, I would think that budget and finance would also be looking at.
There's a own financial aspect of this.
I've been told once there's a dollar sign or a zero next to it, it's a.
There's neither.
Zero dollars is not.
Zero, there's nothing, no, there's no money attached to this.
Okay. Zero is still a number, but I wanted to.
Oh, no, there's no money. There's no dollar sign.
Okay.
Is the uh.
I understand. Um, do we have a plan for when this work is going to be done?
Yeah, it's gonna be done between November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four and June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Number of this.
Harbor Master has showed up.
Okay. Perfect timing.
That is the period of the license. That's when the traps will be off the piers and that's when the area is available to be repaired.
Can we welcome Harbor Master Chris Lucido to the meeting?
Master Chris Lucido is in the house.
Sorry, Chris.
And uh I think there's a question that's going to be directed to you right now.
First, good evening. Catch your breath, take it to me. Um, one of the questions I just asked, I think Counselor Grow answered it, but when is the work scheduled to be done?
Uh, it's scheduled to be done as soon as possible between those two dates, the storage dates.
Number of twenty twenty-four and May of twenty twenty.
Correct.
Okay. How is this paid for? Have we already secured funding for that? Is it from retained earnings to the Waterways Board? Is it from stabilization?
Yes, we're looking at that right now, probably returned uh retained earnings from the Waterways Board.
Excuse me. What are you asking? What are you asking to be paid for?
We already identified, because obviously starting as soon as.
What do you, what it, what is requiring funding?
The repair is gonna cost money.
Okay, that's a separate issue.
Well, timing of that. He said he wants to start as soon as possible. Does he need to come back to the council to?
Yeah, but that's a separate issue. That is not before us today. That would, that would be something that if they need to transfer and it needs to come before B and F, that would be a money issue. That is not part of this.
Right, we're here for the license.
Understood. Um, city ordinance for the Waterways Board requires that there be a uh public facilities committee.
Waterways Board has no jurisdiction over the parking lot? Sorry.
It literally says in the ordinance, Saint Peters docks.
It had, that's the dock. On the parking lot, the city, the city has jurisdiction. The Waterways Board does not have jurisdiction over the parking lot.
This came as a recommendation to the mayor from the Waterways Board.
From the Harbor Master's office. It should, is where, is where it really, is where it came from. The memo is from the Harbor Master.
Not the Waterways Board.
Waterways Board has, has pushed this forward, but has then since been removed from the equation because they have no jurisdiction.
So the public properties arm of the Waterways Board is not involved in this?
Is not a public facility of the Waterways Board. The parking lot is not.
See? Okay. Um, if, I'm sorry, regarding, if I can, the repair of the dock, how long has it been since we've repaired these docks? The last time.
Yeah, the, the traps, this is strictly, this motion is not about the repair of the docks. Um, now, the, the intent is to repair it. The reason for this, the purpose of this is to have to be able to fix the docks this winter. How that gets done is not before us tonight.
Understand. Couple of questions. I'm gonna try to see if they do make sense and if they don't, you have every right to correct me.
There's no action we can take on these questions.
So if my questions don't fit into the, the right place, I apologize. I'm gonna do my best. Um, there was the, uh, there's a sentence that says that there would be no fee for this next year. I think the year is defined as the next season maybe, but what happens if, whether borrowing or transferring maybe takes time?
This is, this is this year only. This is this year only. We are not dealing with the future.
I'm dealing.
You are, but we are not voting on the future.
So what's the expectation?
There is no mechanism today. The expectation is it expires on June fifteenth.
Can we change that date?
If you wanna make an amendment to change that date, feel free, but I don't, I, you know, this is what has been requested. It's November fifteenth to June fifteenth for the license for the two marinas for their tenants.
So Lucido, if the council were to grant the authority to do this and extend the timeframe for the no charging, um, in case you need more time, would that be an object, would you have an objection to that?
I don't see us needing more time. The, that's, those are the dates that we've used while this gear is on the pier. It'll work in the parking lot also. They don't need more time. We gave them an extra month. Uh, we, we requested an extra month to give them time to take their gear and put it in the water and fish.
The work can be done.
Yes, yes.
That solves that problem, I guess, if the changes.
If I could also answer that, is that no gear will be put on those piers either after June fifteenth. So there's no, there's no interference after June fifteenth anyway, so.
My last question on this, I'm sorry for all the questions, but I hope it's helpful. Um, and I've got fishermen in my family, but I've never lobstered. So I don't, I don't wanna sound like I'm an expert on something I know nothing about. But it's a build a lobster up tree. Those can be heavy. Um, the fishermen who use Saint Peters dock, if their gear is at I four C two, instead of lugging their gear from I four C two to Saint Peters, will there be a place for them to pull up, use the hoist? And how does that work as a mechanism for?
Yes, we propose that. They can use the, the dock and the crane at I four C two. They can bring their boat into an area that's not, uh, that doesn't usually have a boat on it. They can unload their gear and put it into the parking lot. Or they can bring it by trailer, whichever is easier for them.
Or put it on their boats too, right? But the only question is.
And, and there's a, a direct from the boat to the land at high tide too.
Right.
For, for Saint Peters and I four C two. They, everybody uses it, but it's not part of any of the, it's on the side.
Right. The question I think you answered is if the people who have leases at Saint Peters would be allowed to use the hoist at I four C two?
Correct, correct.
Bring their gear down to.
Some of them will. Some, some will bring it by trailer, but.
And, and in speaking at the site visit with the fishermen, they said that even the I four C two guys, most of them, don't use the hoist anyway. That it, that they, everything gets loaded, um, you know, particularly the traps, get right off the dock onto the boat and eliminates the whole timing of putting.
Have you lobstered before? Because you sound like you know what you're talking about. I don't. Uh, last question on that, though. Um, when they pull up to I four C two, I'm guessing it's just a first come, first serve. Like, how do they know that they've got a spot to, if there's other fishermen pulled up there? Is there a way of?
They'll have to wait. I mean, it's, that, that side that they use to unload gear is usually open. Nobody berths there. So they come in, empty their, empty their, or unload their boat, and then the next person can come in.
So Lucido, you may answer all my questions.
Counselor Benson.
Just um for a point of clarity, um, the lobstermen are not gonna be charged for storage?
No.
Okay. And then my la, my other question is, access to storage is not changing its location. There'll be, there, there will, um, there isn't a decrease in access to storage, it's just being moved from Saint Peters to I four C two. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The same square footage or more.
Okay.
Than what they have now.
Thank you.
They won't lose any parking. We allocated eight spots plus three. And the three can be the three extra spots or overflow storage, whichever they prefer.
Whichever they prefer. Thank you.
Counselor Grow.
Just a final point, uh, Harbor Master Lucido will be the determining factor in this. He'll be overseeing the implementation of where these traps are put and making sure that everybody plays nice with each other throughout the season so that he's the one responsible for administering the entire process. Our, our, our focus is limited on granting of the license.
Or this year only.
Or this year. From, from when?
Uh, Counselor Gilman.
So not to go backwards, but I just wanna throw out an option. We could upload the questions right now that we went over tonight and make sure that everyone here is comfortable with it. Seeing that we haven't had the opportunity to see the minutes, it could be done in about five minutes because we've already answered ninety percent of the questions. But just if you wanted to, to feel good about that, I know Grace has that on her screen. Um, but without objection, but you don't have to do this if you don't think it's necessary. I'm just throwing out an option.
Or maybe someone could just summarize the questions that weren't asked.
You asked, you asked quite a few of them, but.
I wouldn't have known, so. Um, if there's any that are critical, I'd be happy if it was just a verbal, um, this question was asked and here's the answer, if that's helpful. I'm okay with where we're at.
Okay, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing twenty twenty-four, number twenty-six, to amend loan order number twenty twenty, number seven for the combined elementary school site work loan order by increasing it from four point two million to six point two million.
Going to open the public hearing. Um, would some, the mayor, would you like to speak in favor?
Absolutely. I, I'm gonna give a quick overview and then Connor has a slide or two to show you. So a, a third of you were here when the whole East Vets project was uh being put together. And you'll recall that above and beyond the amount that was reimbursable from MSBA, the city council at the time borrowed four point two million dollars to cover three items. One was the swing space at Sanian School. One was. One was the, setting up a softball field at Green Street, or at that time at another location which became Green Street. And the third was raising the East Gloucester School site. So 4.2 million dollars at 2019 or so proved to be insufficient to complete all three tasks. We ended up using some opera money to wrap up the work at Green Street, and now we find ourselves tapped out completely from that 4.2. And we cannot leave a vacant building on the site at East Gloucester because that's not good for anybody, let alone our insurance premiums. So the $2 million will be to raise the building and grade the site. I did correspond with Mike Hale this morning that we will put into the bid package to leave the playground equipment for the time being. The point is, we don't have the additional $2 to $3 million that will cost to complete the project. I'm sure you all saw the proposal for the softball, sorry, soccer field and some other amenities up there. But at this time, what we want to do is get that building down so it's not a attractive nuisance. And Connor, if you're ready, we can go over some of the numbers with you.
So the mayor just broke down a little bit of the history of these loans. I have both loans related to the school project up on the screen here. There was the primary construction loan order of 66.7 million dollars. That's on the right-hand side of this chart. It was an approved debt exclusion. I had reimbursement from the Mass School Building Authority, and the intention of the loan was to design, do site work, the construction and the outfitting of the new school. I just looked this afternoon, there's about 4.5 million dollars of budget available on that larger loan order. So that one is coming in under budget, which is great. When the original loan order was done, we knew there would be other costs that were not reimbursable by the MSBA. So that's where the loan order that's in the middle of your screen came into play. It's inside the levy limit. It had no MSBA reimbursement, and the intention of the loan was to demo the East Gloucester School, to relocate the ball fields, and to outfit the Saint Anne's swing space. As of this afternoon, there's only $73,000 left on that loan order. So from the 4.2 million dollar loan order, we've spent 98% or 4.12 million of it on the Green Street Park, the Saint Anne's swing space, and access roads, which is broken down on the pie charts in the top left of this slide. To date, no demolition work for the East Gloucester Schools taken place, and we don't have sufficient funds to begin that demolition. Mike Hale, the DPW director, received an estimate of $2 million to demo the East Gloucester space to take place in the spring. So we're requesting an amendment to this loan order and the amount of $2 million so that we can fund that demolition. And then just in the bottom left hand of this slide, I just did an estimate of what the payment would be for $2 million based on our last borrowings. We have about $136,000 a year for 20 years. And then just something to have on record, the right-hand side of this slide is the city's debt service schedule for the next five years. This would be general fund debt inside the levy limit, so it's on the yellow highlighted line of this slide.
Questions? Connor? Well, since he's up there at the podium, I thought.
Public hearing?
Oh, that's right, public hearing. Sorry, Connor. Yes. Sorry about that. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Sure. Favor or opposition?
First.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, good luck.
Before I start, eight years, eight years I've been at this. Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Mount Pleasant Avenue. To the administration of the city of Gloucester, both elected and appointed, let us back up for a moment to September 2020, when I was quoted in the Times article, and I quote, "For four years, Mary Ann Albert Boucher has been following the conversation around the proposed school building and wants to know if more costs will be revealed down the pipeline. Will this be all that is needed? Do we know? Shouldn't we know? Will all of the costs related to this project be provided prior to the November 2020 vote?" End quote. With Opera Funds, a consultant was hired and presented plans at least twice for a new park on the site of the former East Gloucester Building and the Parsons Playground. The public was led down a path that this leg of the project was finally going to have an end result that benefited the community, especially our children, and this land was going to be the swap of open space that it was intended for, even though it was an overlay. We are already at a loss field-wise. The new open space plan for 2022 to 2029, page 87, doesn't even have any protection on the EGS site and the Maxwell Parsons Playground. Why? What happened to this deed-restricted, placed-in-perpetuity piece of property? Let me remind the mayor that the council and the mayor, and the council of the letter I received from the mayor, that you all have dated October 6, 2022, when he states that it's being returned to its original space as open space. The public was informed that the building would be razed last winter, winter turned into spring, and then this fall. 24, fall is now. The project started in March of 2016. The school is complete, but still no working softball complex at Green Street. We are still waiting for the replacement of the Charlie Thomas Field that was taken from the Fuller School Site, but that's a story for another day. The original 4.2 allocation was targeted for three projects. 1.2 million was to demo grade and see the East Gloucester Site, but according to recent Times article, the new estimate was 1.97 million, an increase of 770,000. This increase will demo and level the property, but goes no further. The mayor communicated the projected 2 to 3 million needed to complete the new park with soccer fields must be put on pause because of budget constraints. This is on top of the proposed 6.2 million dollar loan order projected in front of you tonight. Let's be clear, if the city council votes to fund the additional 2 million, it's only to raise and level the area. If the city council votes not to fund it, then what happens to the Article 97 swap of land agreement from the environmental justice neighborhood and all of the community park planning at EGS? It would be cost, would have been more cost-effective to have demolished the EGS. I have one more sentence, before the Meadows Field of the Article 97 law required. Does when reasonably practicable, the amendment language that you all chose and went to the House and Senate, really mean never? Or does it mean that the city has other plans for this perpetual stall? I urge the council to pass the vote and stop extending the timeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to leave that with us, too? Thank you. Yep, three minutes.
I really don't even know what to say. This has been really expensive, and I think, oh, Patty Amaral, live at 14 Moon Square by the Emerald Forest, trying to save that too, but that might be gone soon. Anyway, this is going to be a really expensive project. I always keep thinking that maybe if we just added on a little bit on veterans, none of us would be here talking about this stuff. The money is flowing out of the wallet of our city. My hat almost fell off. I just don't understand what the taxpayers are going to do. They're going to keep paying and paying and paying? And you have to do this because it's Article 97 land, and you have to.
You speak to us, Patty.
You have to, well, I had to talk to the mayor because he's back there. You have to do this. You have to do it because it's Article 97. If you don't do it, then you're going to be against Article 97, the Constitution. And you've already changed it, reasonable, practical. I looked that up for a definition. I can't remember what it said, because I have ADHD, but it says something about it's reasonably practical. It's supposed to be reasonable. This is not reasonable. How many, how many years has it been, Mary Ann? Now you said eight, six? Eight years? Eight years, that's a really long time. And, and my son lives in that area now, so I'm up East Gloucester all the time now. I am saddened to the fact of the condition that it's in. I have to watch my granddaughter every step that she makes. And I hate to see, you know, I hate to see that playground equipment get thrown in the dumpster like the veterans' equipment did. I'm sorry, plastic is heavy, it lasts for a really long time. We're throwing away a lot of money here in the city of Gloucester, and we have to stop it. Because soon we won't be able to live here, you know? My son's ready to get up and leave. How many people are? We can't keep taking money from people. And I know it's only 700 and something thousand dollars, but it's a lot of money to everybody. And now the kids are left with hard concrete at Veterans with no grass at all to run on play. Joseph lost his land. Article 97 land was lost. What are we doing? I don't have all the answers. I don't. You can't go backwards, you can only go forward. You're going to have to approve this loan. There's no way you can't, because you'll be going against Article 97. And we've already stomped on the Constitution with that, changing all the rules and regulations. I'm confused. But thank you for listening to me. I know it won't go anywhere. You're going to have to approve it, so please do it, and let's get this done. Because I'd like to just get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Nope, nope, you have to turn it on. Patty shut it off on you.
Hi. Denise Piscucci, 20 Birch Grove Heights. Obviously, you need to knock the school down because that was the Article 97 land swap. But my biggest question for the past few years is, when did rehab of Green Street become part of this project? I attended the city council meeting where you approved the 4.2 million dollars, and Green Street had nothing to do with it. I understand you chose to rehab Green Street, and now I understand that the softball field's not ready yet, and also there was an issue with having a bathroom there for the woman, which was part of the whole agreement from the last administration. We, we told people that quota parties are not the same as bathrooms, and women really deserve the bathrooms that we had at Meadows Field that was totally taken away from us. It went back and forth for the DPW and the mayor that they couldn't afford the $250,000 that was estimated to build these bathrooms. Then when I questioned it, it was brought back out that, oh, oh, it was not $250,000 and the DPW didn't have a estimate that I asked for a public records request. So I think that was pulled out of the sky. So here we are again, softball field hasn't been used yet. It's almost done, I understand. Bathrooms now cannot be built because there's not enough money. So my issue I have here, and I wish everybody would think about this, is that money is being spent that none of us had any vote on. I don't think anybody was brought to the city council and say, can we spend money on rehabbing Green Street Playground? So I have a problem that we are short of money to knock down East Gloucester School, and why wasn't it knocked down two years ago? I think it would be nice to let the people of Gloucester know what happened here and why we are so short on funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Haley Meone, 6 Davis Street Extension. I'm the house right next to the East Gloucester School, and I have three daughters, 13, 11, and 8, who have gone through this project almost their entire lives at this point and have worried and cried multiple times about losing their school. And now I can't imagine going back and saying to them, oh, sorry, now there's not going to be a park there. Because my only hook to these kids was to tell them, yes, you're losing your school, but there'll be a beautiful playground, they've assured me. My 11-year-old said to me today, wait, why are you going back to City Hall? I thought the plans were done. I thought we were having a nice park next to the house. That's what my friends and I have been counting on. So I really hope you approve this, as much as I hate to see you spend more money. You have to do this for the kids. They're counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to bring Pam? Pam, you want to?
Can you hear me?
Yep. Name and address.
Yep, Pam Steele, 10 Pilots Hill. I would also like you to please approve the money because I, I was on all of this from the very beginning, my property abouts the school. And I think it's deplorable that the money was spent without considering that it was earmarked for the school property and the playground. I really am asking with all my heart that you go back to the original decisions that we all worked so hard to get into place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any communications?
We do not.
All right, questions from counselors? Go rebuttal from home. Everybody spoke in favor, so.
Thinking the same thing, everybody spoke in favor. However, there were some questions raised. So to remind people, I've been here three years. This project was all approved when I was a civilian. That being said, 4.2 million dollars in 1919, 1919, 2019, as we all know with supply chain and inflation, was certainly not enough. But I agree, there were some decisions that maybe would have been done differently if I were around, but that's, that's the past. We've got to look to the future, and we can't leave this building standing there any longer. We got to have the fire department go in and do some training in there, so we got to utilize it one last time, but it is time for this to come down, and we can't do that without this additional funding. So thank you for everybody who spoke, too.
Okay.
You, thanks for letting us know.
Questions from the council? Counselor Grow?
We've got a couple. Connor, can I have you come up and bring up your, your magic number sheet thingy? Love the slide? Yeah, the one that has the 4.5 million dollars left on the right side.
Okay.
Basically, what I'd like to know is, what is that 4.5 million dollars? Is, is that, that 4.5 million dollars is not part of the 4.2 million originally budgeted? So why is that money not available?
It's not approved, the loan orders have different scopes under them, so this loan order, it just doesn't fall within the scope.
So what is happening to that 4.5 million dollars?
If the project closes out completely and we don't use the money, we just won't borrow for it.
So effectively, we, that, if, if that's the case, if the project clears out and you've got 4.5 million dollars, then it's not that we would offset it, but it, we would have 4.5 million dollars less to borrow on that project that would essentially be what we're borrowing now.
That's correct.
So, but we already have a 4.2 million dollar loan order. We're, we're asking for an additional $2 million. What was the scope, and maybe the mayor's actually better poised to answer this question, what was the scope of the, of the project planning? And what, what funding were we plann- And what, what funding were we planning on using for the, for the soccer field and the final resolution of that? I don't.
That, that's a great question. That $4.2 million that was approved in 2019 or '20 was supposed to cover, '20, '20 was supposed to cover all of that. The, you know, they hadn't picked Green Street yet, but a field was supposed to be built somewhere else. That 4.2 was supposed to fund all of that. We had to have the swing space, the rent and whatever, remodel we had to at St. Anne's, and it was supposed to raise the school over at East Gloucester and build something else. You know, so that was the original design. And so that 4.5 left over is part of the debt exclusion, so it can't be transferred.
I get that. I understand that. But what, the good, the good news is that we may not have to borrow that, which means that we will sort of zero out on what we have, maybe close to zero out, what we're trying to borrow in the future. But I guess the question I have is, is the $4.2 million that was appropriated for the Green Street Playground, I'm sorry, for the East Gloucester demolition and renewal was also spent on the Green Street Playground renovation? Let, can we, do me a favor and let's let the mayor ask these questions and not have comments from the crowd. So what, what, how was that $4.2 million spent? We've already spent it all?
Except $73,354.
So we're effectively looking for $2 million more to do the demolition, but that's not going to actually create any parkland except?
Right. Well, it, yes and no. It will demo the building, it'll grade the site. And like I said, I want to make sure that the current equipment, playground equipment can still be utilized because the other awesome plan we saw with the soccer field and other things is an additional estimated $2 to $3 million. These numbers weren't finalized in 2019. You know, we just fast forward to 2022, '23, and it's like, we started actually doing the numbers on the atom machine and.
And I understand that the costs rise and the whole bit. I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers at this. I'm just trying to understand the numbers and where we're going. Why aren't we, why aren't we doing a loan order for the whole thing and getting it done?
Well, as you see, the, it's not on this slide, but it was 100 and, what was the payment for the 123, $165,000 a year? You saw what the budget looked like last year. Every $100,000 we're adding in debt service is very hard for us. And the fact is, you've recently approved $206 million for the sewer plant that really ate into our borrowing capacity.
So, I mean, that's, that's a, we haven't started borrowing against that. That's projected borrowing capacity. Yeah.
Yeah, as far as the, the, what do you call them? The, the agencies that could, the bond, the bond rating, it's still money that we're committed to, even though we haven't borrowed a dime of it. But that project is going to happen. And 40 years ago, if decisions had been made differently, that thing would have been paid off, but that's another story.
I guess I, I guess I'm, if I could just finish and I'll be done. I'm, I do recognize that these questions are pretty valid in the sense that we, we made an agreement, we made provisions to swap the land, we made provisions to eliminate the school and rebuild a sporting, you know, sport playground complex, whatever. We've done, the Green Street Playground, Softball Field looks amazing from all, you know, I'm hoping that we'll have an opening day at some point. But I, I think that we're going to end up with a big vacant grassy lot for the next 10 years. Is that, I mean, is that what we're looking at?
Unless we can find a clever way to borrow another $2 to $3 million. I mean, it's up to the council, but our CFO, and I agree, are very reluctant to borrow at this time. We're going to have, we had a tough budget this current fiscal year. Next year is going to be even worse, you know, spoiler alert. So I just think we have to be as conservative as we can until things start to smooth out. And change, change, listen, we inherited a situation and we're trying to invest it. The $4.2 million wasn't like this much for Green Street, this much for East Gloucester, this much for St. Anne's, you know?
No, I get it.
I'm, I'm going to interject. I want to, Councilor Groh brought up the $4.5 million. That, I want to make sure that everybody understands what that money is. We don't have that money. That is money we would borrow, but we are borrowing as part of the debt exclusion. So that is totally different. It's different, has a total different effect on our bond rating. It, there's no way we could use this money, that $4.5 million. And what, what happened was that we came under budget. The state came in with over $5 million in ARPA expenditure money, and that helped do this so that the citizens of Gloucester are paying $4.5 million less every tax bill, including the interest, which probably means that we're going to, citizens of Gloucester are going to wind up paying about $7 million less for that school than they would if we spent that $4.5 million. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. $4.5 million is not money we have, money that we'd be putting on our backs. Councilor Mizrahi.
I just have one question. With the $2 million with the, if this goes and the building is leveled, is there anything that the city is doing? When the YMCA went down and there was a rodent issue, is there any preventative measures that the city is planning to sort of help the residents that live in there if there is?
There are requirements. Yeah. There are requirements, you know, that they're going to have to get all any asbestos, lead, any other hazardous material, any building that's demoed, they have to have a, I don't know the right word, but I sold the building, we had to have a pest exterminator come in and start putting out bait. So that's something that's done ahead of time.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
That's a typical requirement for anything, not just our projects.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Worthley.
Actually, Kelsey had his hand up before me, but your call.
Councilor Benson.
Thank you, Councilor Worthley. My question, so my specific, there's conversations around Green Street. Could you clarify, like, why, why was money used here for Green Street Park? Because you, like, I'm just curious, like, why?
Dylan, can you speak into the mic?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Oh, sorry. So my question specifically is, why was money specifically from this used for the Green Street Park?
Right.
Because I know there was quite, there was questions at the, during our speaking in favor regarding Green Street Park. I just, if we could answer some of that question, and it's now intrigued me.
Right, right. So a, a big part of it, it wasn't just setting up a softball field. You know, as you noticed, there's a road that goes in there from Gloucester Cross. And so there was some infrastructure work there. They created parking there. They put a walking path around the park. So it wasn't, it wasn't $4.2 million that was blown over there. You know, it was a lot more than just the, the field. And to address the thing about the lights that was brought up, yes, there was an issue. I wasn't here when it happened. I found out and, and that it was demoed incorrectly, and so they couldn't reuse them. It was not a pleasant surprise that I got. The one decision we had was, do we just say, never mind, we're not going to put lights up? Or do we use the, find another source? And we tapped into Opera to help finish that project. So there was a lot more than just putting a softball field in the middle of the Green Street Playground, the Green Street, I used to call the playground, or Green Street Park is what we're calling it now.
So, and then there was the question regarding the bathrooms. Could you just, like, clarify, could there ever be a, could there ever be a time where the bathrooms could be installed?
Yes, part of the infrastructure work was to run the sewer line from the bottom of Green Street, you know, right, at the right angle, the entrance of the Green Street Park, where the parking lot is. Originally, the, the thought was that they put it down near the softball field, but that would have been a pressure system. Tony knows these things more than me, but a lot of hundreds of feet of pressure, that wouldn't be that great. It was a lot more economical to go from Green Street to the pad that we envision it right there, I believe, between the current parking and the basketball court.
Okay. And then, because we're, there was also discussion regard, since we're on, with just Green Street quickly, there was discussion around the softball field being available eventually. There was also, there, there's been discussion of the easement between us and Sam Park. Has that easement gone through to have access to the parking lot?
Yes. We've got an extension on the construction easement. I've spoke to Sam Park about it several weeks ago. So we're in good shape. It's not finalized yet for permanent easement, but I'm not concerned about it. The other, what was the other part of the question?
That was just, my question was like the eas, so once that's done, will we be able to use?
Oh, and about the, the field. The field should be, the field will be ready to use in whenever the season starts, April or May.
Okay, okay. And my last point, we're talking about the, Councilor Groh was talking about the, the field at the, at the current school.
East Gloucester School.
Yes, East Gloucester School. The current, the field there, and if it's, we now need an additional, from my understanding, an additional $2 million, $2 million to be able to have an actual, like, soccer field or something like that. Once this is, like, we agree with this tonight and the building is demolished, the field would be available for use, though, for people to just recreationally use. If someone wants to set up a little soccer net, they could be able to do that, right? Once.
Right. The, the goal is to have it be a graded area. We can't just tear the building down, leave a?
Of course.
Hole in the ground.
Okay, it would be a great, but it would be, we would be able to have a graded area even before we use the two, we get, maybe have to get an additional $2 million, but we could use the field for just some sort of recreational.
Exactly. Last, last thing I want to do is just put up a chain link fence around it and say, we've got to wait till we have $5 million to do the whole project. So, you know, and we just have to look and think creatively over the next several months, see if there's a way around it. But I think we have to get through the next budget before we even consider that.
With that being said, could we, could we look at maybe getting soccer nets to just, maybe they're just stored there where folks could maybe use soccer? I mean, there aren't, there's no real soccer field in the downtown area, and there are many people downtown that want to play soccer. But that's just my question specific. Could we maybe look at, could that be something we could look to? Maybe purchasing some soccer nets for people to just be able to use down?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to look into that because I don't know if we have that kind of equipment at any or other fields or if they're done by leagues or individuals.
Just, it's just a throwing out there. I'm not saying it's a pro, but just, just curious. Thank you.
Councilor Worthley.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. So oftentimes we hear, well, this fund is adding to our debt limit and the sewer project adding to our debt limit. My understanding of municipal finance law is that the borrowing for the school, sorry, my understanding of municipal finance law is that the borrowing for the school is funded by the override. That does, is treated differently than other borrowers.
Correct.
Okay. And the funding for the $206 million for the sewer plant, you haven't determined yet how it's going to be funded, I think, but that would either be sewer rate or debt exclusion, but it would be a separate, as a debt exclusion, separate from our overall borrowing, as far as the regulators are concerned.
Separate from, no, no. I'm going to let Connor explain it, but it is. It's, it's through the SRF, State Revolving Fund, and, but it is a loan. Even though we haven't borrowed a nickel yet, it's still counting towards what we've, our debt, but I'm not a CFO.
Source, then it's not counted the same way as if it were coming out of our budget.
If it's on an enterprise fund, it still goes towards what we've accrued in debt. The only time it doesn't appear on that schedule is if it's a voted override, like a big loan order for the school.
So the money from the school is not counted in our debt, our debt ceiling?
The $66.7 million loan order, but the 4.2, potentially $6.2 million loan order would be.
And then when we talk about the $206 million borrowed or going to be borrowed, or whatever stage that is, if that's paid for out of an enterprise account, does that impact our borrowing capacity?
It does, even if it's override, you know, even if we override it to be outside of the levy limit. The chapter and verse that we borrowed from does not exempt it.
Okay. But when we talk about its impact on the budget, and I forget the number that you showed on the screen, 137, maybe 175, I can't remember what it was.
136.
136, okay. Sorry, rounded up. 136,000. Money that's borrowed from an override, money that's borrowed and paid for from debt exclusion or sewer does not change that number for our annual cost to service our debt?
Correct. It's just categorized differently. So on the chart, the excluded debt is up towards the top and the included is in the bottom.
Just when we talk with them in the same meeting and kind of conflate them, people see like, oh my God, this is going to, we're going to hit our limits. I'm not saying we should be borrowing needlessly, but they're categorized in very specific ways.
Yes.
The money that we didn't spend or didn't have to borrow for from the new school, the four and a half million dollars, that money could not be used for the site work at East Gloucester School. Is it?
Good.
Okay. Because there's restrictions on how that loan authorization was.
Especially where it's an override.
Wouldn't those same restrictions have applied on the other 4.2 million on spending that money at Green Street Playground beyond the softball field?
So the way I understand the loan order, it just says ball field reallocation. So, yeah.
So I love that the work got done at Green Street. I don't want to ever knock the work or the people that deserve that, but there is a question, and I think it's a fair question to say, and I don't even know the number, I saw some spreadsheet, but how did that money, under what authority, does the mayor, the council, like, the regulators, like, where does that become a problem that we spent money that was for a ball field for playground equipment? We call it Green Street, but I think it's the Janine Dousit Playground. I think that's what we're talking about. So just to honor her too. Is there a, a space, a place you could tell us what authority those decisions could be made?
Anytime they open up a new purchase order or requisition, it would go through an approval process. That goes to, depending on the fund number, goes to different people in the city for review and approval.
So who approved that?
I would have to look. I don't know who the approver is on that fund.
I mean, at the state level or whatever bonding companies that say you can, you know, we borrow something with a very specific language on loan authorization. Who's overseeing that? There's got to be a state agency or a federal agency that says you can or can't do.
It'd be during our audit, during our audit every year.
Okay, we'd look at that.
Point out, the loan authorization was pretty vague. For instance, it said nothing about lights or bathrooms, but we did it anyway. So there's a lot of things that we are, you could do all the digging, but it's, we did not divert money that was supposed to be spent elsewhere. There were, there were three items to be done, one pool of money.
Mr. Mayor, is that right in the loan order? That it says ball field relocation? So it was in the original, the green, you know, wherever it went to, was in the original loan order. So it's not being diverted, it's being used for the intended purpose.
Oh, I get that, but the Green Street Playground is beyond ball field.
But you needed a road to get to it. You know, so there was a lot, and again, there was nothing about bathrooms in there, so the argument could be made, well, we shouldn't have spent money on running the, the line to do bathrooms or backstops or, you know, dugouts, et cetera, et cetera.
Somewhere, it may not have been the loan authorization, but at that meeting, the promise was that all of the amenities at Meadows Field would be replaced.
The vote was what Tony just read. And we, to the best of our ability, we've replaced those amenities. And unfortunately, it wasn't enough money.
And then, and I do understand inflation. Do have this question though, two questions. I raised the question of the bathrooms, and then it seemed like it got resolved, but now...
Sort of resolved. We, we put the spot in, the intention was to do it, but we ran into this shortfall.
Okay.
Let, I'm going to let someone else speak for a minute and then we'll get back to.
One more question.
One more?
I think I can do it, one more question.
One more, and then that's it? You can't ask anymore after that? Or you can wait and let someone else speak?
Okay, I'll wait then, just in case something else comes up. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Gilman. Just didn't want you to.
So this is, through you, Councilor Gross, a question to the, to the mayor. So one of the things that we did really well in terms of this was we had this very creative opportunity here at City Hall several times to get the children, the athletes, the neighbors all excited about what was going to happen for open space at East Gloucester. So now that we have a different type of plan because of costs, which I think everyone understands, we don't love that, but we understand that situation. I'm wondering if we could, through your office and community development regroup, to kind of talk about a possibility of a community project to make that open space livable and useful to the children and the athletes without spending exorbitant money until such time we can afford it. It's just a nice way to kind of get us all back together. We have so many landscapers in the city and people that would be really willing to, you know, bring up some, some equipment and see what we could do to make it a reasonable place so at least the children aren't feeling like they're missing out on this pretty neat thing that they were really excited about. Just a thought. I know it's tough to answer on the spot, but it's just, I think it's, it's kind of a feel-good thought right now, but my opinion.
I'm open to any creative ideas. Councilor Memard.
Thank you. Just looking through the proposal that Mike Hill solicited for the raising of the school site and the demolition. site and the demolition there, I just wanted to make sure everybody understands, we talked tonight about preserving the playground during construction. It also specifies as part of this project that the, the fill will, the, the site will be filled and graded to subgrade consistent with the proposed long-term plan, will four inches of topsoil and then seeding. So the, the plan, as I understand it, is that it's going to be a, a seeded grassy lawn on an interim basis at the very least.
Correct.
According to this plan.
And, and the thing that's not called there, which I pointed out to Mike, we want to get into the extra bid documents, is making sure we can preserve the current playground equipment. At least for the time being, there'll be something there in addition to just a grassy field.
Very much appreciated.
Council Grow.
Just a couple of questions. I just, just for my clarification, we are expanding our, the existing loan order from 4.2 to 6.2. So project cost for the East Gloucester raising and reseeding and grading is going to be $2 million.
Correct.
Okay. And then that's, then we're, then we're
We've got to get it, we've got to get actual quotes, but Mike's got some pretty skilled people that give him the number to work with, so.
Can we get on that before it's $3 million?
Yeah.
Second, can I ask, uh, Council, City Solicitor Egan, very quickly? They want you to think your time was being wasted, so. The chapter 90, uh, the chapter 97, chapter 97, article 97?
Yes.
Thank you, article 97, questions that were asked. What, what is the, what is the situation with that in terms of us not currently being in compliance with having provided a open space?
We are in compliance with our article 97 special legislation at this point. We certainly are. We have taken the, and I haven't looked at it recently, but if I recall, and I may not have it exactly, there was initial special legislation stated that it would be done sort of simultaneously, have that land available, and then it said when it was reasonably possible. And also I believe the chapter 97, a land in agreement referred to the open space at the Green Street Playground or Ball Field also. So the notion of an article 97 is we have open space, we're going to create new open space. So in this instance, if you look at it, we have that Green Street, the improved playground or recreational area, and then we also have this East Veterans that will be
Even though it's not actually
But I did, exactly. And, and I haven't looked at it recently, so I don't know the specific language and details.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that clarified.
I'm a, no, Council Worthley.
Thank you. Think of another question, so I'm glad you gave me that option. If Ms. Egan could continue staying here, do you have a rough guess of the acreage of the Green Street Field?
No, I do not. That would be something for a different department, not the legal department.
You suggest it's the same size as Meadows Field?
I have absolutely, I'm sorry, I do not have any knowledge whatsoever of that.
My understanding, and I wasn't on the council at the time, but article 97, the phrase was no net loss of open space. So it has to include the East Gloucester School as well.
So I am not familiar with that. As I said, I haven't looked at it for a while. I was just trying to answer that question. I'm not familiar with that.
Okay.
Let me just add that, the East Gloucester School is still going to be included in it. It's just, we're not ready to put down the, the soccer field. You know, it will be graded, it is, Council Memard pointed out, four inches of soil and seeded. So, and I do believe, you know, I, I never measured it, but a quick guess, it looks like Green Street is somewhat larger than the Meadows area, but definitely it's irrelevant because we're also doing East Gloucester Schools.
Okay, two last questions. You mentioned that if we had 40 years ago took funding for sewer projects or upgrading the sewer plant, we wouldn't have to be spending 206 million dollars now. And had we quoted it correctly and done the work four years ago on this, we wouldn't be needing two more million dollars. But the question, you throw out the number five million, maybe intentionally or maybe you're just exaggerating, that it might cost that much for the field, whatever the open space is. Is there any guarantee that we're not going to turn that into a much bigger number by delaying this?
Uh, no, there isn't. I mean, but unlike building the school or another, you know, vertical structure, this is a field. So it's, it's a lot easier to maintain your pricing than, we don't worry about the price of steel and, and other things like that.
And the last question is, I appreciate that it's going to be seeded. Do we have a budget for mowing these lawns?
Yeah, they'll be part of the DPW. So, you know, they cut the grass when it was a school, so they'll continue. I mean, it's, Mike pointed out even to, as you know, any building, we have to keep in mind what's, we had a bigger building at East Vets than we had between the two schools, so it takes more maintenance. And the problem we're in now is, you know, the poster child is the police station, that it was deferred maintenance for decades, you know? And so we're trying to avoid that kind of mistake. Again, I don't mean to point the finger at my predecessors up here, but you know, I just wanted to be, we're looking this direction and not that direction.
Understood. I just want to keep looking forward if it's not done soon with the, a loan authorization or a grant or some other method.
Right. We won't stop looking for grants. I mean, there's also CPC, but you know, at the most you can get 100 or 200,000 dollars a year. Was that your last?
I, I answered, you answered my questions. Thank you.
Council Grace.
Mary Ann brought up a point regarding the East Gloucester School Site, not specifically in the literature on the website to say that it is protected land. Can we update that so that it, that these people have peace of mind knowing that this will be protected in perpetuity?
Sure, sure. I'll connect with you because I'm not really sure what we're talking about, like where you mean, but anyway, I'm supposed to be talking to them.
And secondly, I just think that they need acknowledgement that, you know, a few months ago, we had consultants and whatnot in all of these meetings and people came in and people were very excited and it was with these wonderful plans that were put forth that now are on hold. And I think that is the source of a lot of this angst right now. And I really think it needs to be acknowledged that maybe we jumped the gun a bit with, you know, kind of giving false hope that this is going to be built. And I just think it's important in terms of public relations and just, you know, openness and transparency with the citizens.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it was necessary, well, certainly weren't intentionally trying to give people false hope.
No, I don't think it's intentional.
But, you know, but, but after that, after the, during and after those sessions, as you recall, we had a really ugly budget and the forecast is looking pretty gl- uh, not so shiny.
And that's not my point. My point is, as I understand it, and I understand the hows and the whys, my point is that these people need acknowledgement that yes, we, it didn't go as planned, but you know, it is going to, it's coming down the road and, and, and just to, you know, to avoid a false sense of hope because it wasn't forthcoming. And I get it, I understand the budget because I sat through all of that too.
No, and, and I, you know, certainly I, I, I agree, but we have spent a lot of time and money on lots of open space throughout the city in the last three years. And unfortunately, we hit the, the stone
It's not the people that are here tonight.
It is not the people that are here tonight, but, okay. Point taken.
Council Benson.
No, thank you. Yeah, if, if the state legislature didn't give a massive tax cut, but we don't, we can digress. So my just question to the solicitors, just so we can, so people understand what article 97 specifically is, this east of, this former school, I'm calling it east, I was about to say East Vets, I mean, former East Gloucester, it is, that land is protected by article 97 for open space. Like, it's not like some development's going to happen there, et cetera, if that makes sense.
So I, I was, in the interim, I was able to look at the appeals court decision because we know that this was a litigated project, this was a very controversial, we found, we went to the appeals court on this and the court did rule in the city's favor. And it looked at that special legislation as to what the city was obligated to do. And actually, in fact, the city was obligated to create the ball field on Green Street through our article 97 legislation. So that's what we have done through that article 97 requirement. And that's specifically mentioned in section two of the special legislation that this council and was approved by the state legislature. So that is the protected land that the city determined would be the transfer.
Sure.
Was that Green Street Ball
But just, okay, but just to confirm, the, the former East Gloucester School Site is protected under article 97?
So in terms of whether or not that we have any legislation or covenant on that land at this point, I do not believe we do have that.
Okay.
I don't believe we've done that, but I know, and I'm sorry, I wasn't really prepared to respond to these questions tonight. I, I stayed after the Harbor Masters, uh, issues, uh, but I know that at this, at a certain point, the council did vote, we did vote to transfer the school, we made those transfers.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Gross.
Council Memard.
Yeah, Susanna, I don't want to contradict, but I, I think you need to check that again. Green Street was already open space. The, the East Gloucester School Site was almost ours to school. The article 97 compliance that the, the city has achieved, as I understand it, and I think that's what other people have heard as well, is by removing the school from the site, we are creating new comparable in acreage and space so that in addition to the deeded Parsons Playground, which is not part of the article 97 line, it's a deeded private playground, is the school site, East Gloucester School Site on Davis Street Extension where the school has been, is being raised in order to create open space, which is the swap for the lost field.
Yes, and you all are much more familiar than, with that than I am. I was just looking at what the appeals court noted, that was on a particular section of the special legislation that this council passed, and that did refer to the Green Street Ball Field. So I just wanted to clarify that. But I cannot, and I am, I apologize, and I wasn't prepared to discuss article 97 and the transfer of land tonight at all, so I'm not really prepared to do that, and I apologize for that.
And I think we're all on the same page that the, the East Gloucester School is going to be open space. So we can confirm, I mean, three of you were sitting here through this whole process a few years ago, I was not, so I will defer to your institutional knowledge.
All right, we ready? Okay, this requires, is the motion made?
You need to close the
I get a closed public hearing.
Close the motion.
Public hearing is closed. Committee report.
Any recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by Council Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve the amendment, the loan order 2020-007 as follows. Ordered that the loan order 2020-007, certificate of vote 2020-141 of this council approved September 22nd, 2020, authorizing the borrowing of 4.2 million dollars to pay costs associated with the East Gloucester Veterans Memorial Consolidated Elementary School Project, including costs incidental or related thereto, is amended in its entirety to provide as follows. That the City of Gloucester appropriates $6,200,000 to pay costs associated with the East Gloucester slash Veterans Memorial Consolidated Elementary School Project, including, but not limited to demolition and additional site work at the current East Gloucester Elementary School Site, ball field relocation, swing space, including costs incidental and related thereto, to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under mask, pursuant to mask general law, chapter 44, section 7, or is pursuant to any other enabling authority. The mayor and any other appropriate officials of the city are authorized to apply for, accept and expend any gifts or grants that may be available to the city to pay costs of the project. Any premium received by the city upon the bond, upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds and notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter 44, section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed by, to pay such costs by a like amount. And further ordered, the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the municipal finance oversight board to qualify under chapter 44A of the general laws, any and all of the bonds authorized by this order and provide such information and execute such documents as the municipal finance oversight board may require for these purposes, and I so move.
Second. Okay, motion made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Worthley. Have any discussion, any further discussion on this? Council Nolan.
So I was here during these votes that have happened, and we definitely did create East Gloucester School as a site for article 97, that, that's 100% that was involved in this. The purpose of this was a tough decision for a lot of people on combining two schools into one area, very expensive for a large project. We held a lot of meetings, but there's definitely no doubt that East Gloucester School is the 90, article 97 transfer point. The neighborhood deserves to have the school removed properly and to at least have a field. And that's still great for the neighborhood and for the neighbors of East Gloucester to have a, a potential for a building block to create something. I, I do understand the hardships of what we're looking at right now with money, but there is no way that I'm not going to vote to follow through with this extra $2 million to make sure we promise the city in East Gloucester to complete this project for the, the transfer of article 97 in a tasteful situation that will open up an area for recreation for the neighbors. And like I said, it, it was a long, arduous task of what we did with the school, a lot of, a lot of people spoke on this, there's a lot of opinions, a lot of well thought out for and against, and every decision we take very seriously. But I definitely will be supporting this tonight because I, I can't let that not follow through the promise that we said that this would happen. So I'll be supporting this tonight and thank everybody for all the hard work.
Council Grow.
Yeah, I'm, I, I absolutely agree with you, Council Nolan, there's, there's no way we're not going to do this tonight. I just, you know, I appreciate that costs have risen dramatically on all these projects and, and in some ways, you know, frankly, it seems a little bit like they've caught, they've risen far beyond what would be reasonably expected under normal inflationary rates, but that's the building industry, I guess, but I don't know. I know that we do run the risk of, you know, creating another promise that goes unfulfilled, so appreciating the future budgetary issues that we're going to be having, and they're going to be quite serious, as you pointed out. We still haven't resolved teacher contracts and para contracts, which are also going to add significantly to our, to our budget. But we, we need to, we need to keep this relatively close to the front burner because, you know, promises were made to the community. I'm not content, but at least a grass field will be better than nothing. I would do, would appreciate very much so that the DPW takes some interest in the equipment that's there. That was all funded and raised by parents of East Gloucester schoolchildren and installed as a project. We want to make sure that, that it remains safe and good for the kids to continue to play until something is more appropriately, appropriately placed there. I just, I just want this to make, I want to make sure that we don't do what we typically do, which is, you know, lose the opportunity, kick the can down the road and then, you know, look at this 10 years from now and it's $8 million to do. I know that we have priorities that beat out this, but I, I do want to make sure that we don't lose sight of it. So thank you.
Council Gilman.
Thank you. Like Council Memard and Council Nolan, I was here during this. In fact, I was chair of planning and development at the time, so I certainly remember the conversations during article 97. I don't think we have a choice and it is apparent that the costs are now a lot higher than they were at the time when we were planning these things, but having heard people in the audience talking about it, no one's happy with the expense, not people that live there and not us, but I think we absolutely have to hold true to our word and move forward with this. our word and move forward with this. So, thank you.
Counselor Benson.
Okay, thank you. It's not Counselor Dillon today, right? So first off, I will be supporting this. Something that I really think is very important to me and important to many folks in this community is the access of open space, the access of green space, the access for our youth to be able to be physically active, whether it's like a soccer field, and we don't really have that many soccer fields in the downtown area. We actually have none. So this obviously is not in the vicinity of the downtown, but it's close. It's not like Magnolia where we have soccer fields. But I hope that in the future, that if we see inflationary, inflation going down, that that will also lead to costs going down, and that maybe that could be an option in the future. Beyond that, I think that this, again, I agree with Counselor Grow, Counselor Nolan, Counselor Gilman, is that this needs to be on the front burner. This needs to be on the front burner because this is a promise that we've made to our community, and we need to continue to expand access to green space, and I appreciate the mayor's commitment to improve, to getting more access to green space and finding innovative ways to expand that, and I appreciate that. Thank you. And I will be supporting this.
Counselor Memard.
Just to follow up, I, I really wanted to acknowledge Mayor Verga and the administration for prioritizing, I believe they used discretionary ARPA funds to do the planning process that resulted in the public input for the build out of the playground site at East Gloucester School. I, that gives us something to aim for. That is a hopeful thing that you've created with the public process, and I, I think, it's not that we're taking it away, but we're dangling it still a little bit. But I do want to thank you for prioritizing that process so that we now have a groundwork laid for what that space beyond just a temporary open field could and will be at some point. So thank you.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you, President Gross. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing this to us. So I certainly will be supporting it without any doubt. You had said something, I think it was March of 2022, we all just had gotten elected and inaugurated, and you said, "I don't know if it's the best use, but I honor the commitment of prior mayors too." Like the city as an agency, as an institution continues regardless of who's mayor, and promises made need to still be kept. So I know that this is a keeping of that promise, but I'd like to see that it goes the full length. You know, there's some buzzwords that get thrown out. Inflation is a legitimate thing. I don't know that there's a lot of supply chain issues with demolition of property, right? We're not getting material in, we're taking the building down. I don't know that supply chain is, it gets thrown out as a, a reason for costs going up, but supply chain isn't, is an issue, is not an issue for that. Ms. Egan, I appreciate your, your comments tonight. There is a discrepancy between what was remembered by counselors and what you're reading, and I'd like to get that clarified. If we, whatever you're looking at on your phone would be helpful for us to have, I think, to really verify that. And also, this was submitted about a month ago to us. I can't imagine that you'd be surprised that we're asking questions about the field, that you weren't prepared for some of these things, so I just hopefully, with respect, hope that the next time we have something like this, we have all the answers that we could possibly have from a legal perspective. I could challenge the mayor to ask our state legislature and our federal delegation to see if there's any open space, grant money, anything of that sort that could be helpful in finishing this project before it does become more expensive. But all that said, we need to do a better job with communication, and we should be supporting this and supporting the full amount when the time is right.
I have a point of order. Counselor Worthley pointed out that this has been in front of us for a month. The administration often asks us to present questions well in advance of public hearings so that they have the information available to us.
I don't think that's a point of order.
And I don't think, I don't think.
It's not a point of order. Sorry.
Fine, but my point is, we shouldn't be upgrading staff at a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Counselor Majota.
I'll keep this quick as we have a lot of other public hearings. I just want to thank the administration and Susan Egan for their professionalism and answering questions that we had, and those over here supporting us. We've been here since, you know, 6:30, so thank you.
You know, I know we're disappointed that this is, that we're unable to fulfill that vision that we all saw, that was so gratifying to see that some wonderful things would happen with this space. I think that if we're patient and allow the grass to grow here, we do have a, because that's one of the problems that we have with all these spaces, is we have to let the grass take hold before we can go and use it, which is getting really taxed our patience, particularly the kids who want to go there. But this is an opportunity that we don't have very often, that we all enjoyed as children, is open space to use our imaginations and, you know, have pickup games that weren't necessarily, you know, just scheduled. And, you know, I think that this is an opportunity for the neighborhood, the greater neighborhood, the greater city, to be able to actually utilize this area until we can find a, the funding sources for this. So I don't feel that this is a, I think that this is a, the step that we have to take to get in the end, end game, but I also think there's an opportunity here to allow our kids to actually exercise their imaginations and enjoy themselves.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Memard.
Aye.
Counselor Nolan.
Aye.
Counselor Worthley.
Aye.
Counselor Benson.
Aye.
Counselor Gilman.
Aye.
Counselor Grace.
Aye.
Counselor Gross.
Aye.
Counselor Grow.
Aye.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public Hearing 2024, Number 27, amend GCO Chapter 8, Fire Prevention and Protection, Section 8-42, Duties of the Bureau of Fire Prevention, subsection B and D. Section 8-47, Routes for Vehicles Transporting Explosives and Blasting Agents. Section 8-48, Vehicles Transporting Hazardous Chemicals or Other Dangerous Articles. And Section 8-49, Fire Lanes on Private or Public Property Devoted to Public Use.
I'm going to open the public hearing. And do we have someone speaking in favor? I see Chief Smith is an attendee. If we could bring in Chief Smith. You're muted, Chief.
Hi, good evening, counsel. These, all of these changes are before you mostly as a housekeeping measure to get these things in line with the current bargaining agreement with the contract with the union that has changed one of the positions. And there was some old language in there regarding the fire prevention officer and who would, who would be in that role, which has since been somewhat changed moderately in, in the contract. So this is to clean that up. The rest of it is all pretty much housekeeping where things were, they just weren't really keeping up with the times and how we manage those things with the routes and, and travel of, you know, hazardous materials as well as explosives. So this is, again, just kind of trying to make sure that the, the paperwork matches up with the practice.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Online. Who wants to speak? Do we have any communications?
No.
And we have questions from the counselors for the chief. Okay, Counselor Benson.
So looking at the red lines versus like, looking at red line versus the blue line, is the red line here, is that like the actual non-housekeeping and the housekeeping and just the sections looking at the change, deleting section 8-47, and then some deletions elsewhere? Chief?
Yeah, so the, the edit mode that is on there for that document, anything that is struck in, in red is the deletions. Anything in blue is the additions.
In blue.
In blue, chief.
Yeah.
I can answer that. When I was preparing the motions for clarity's sake, the stricken language was in blue with a strikeout. The new language is in red.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that does. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Committee report. Counselor Nolan.
On a motion by Counselor Grace, seconded by Counselor Majota, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommend the City Council amend GCO Chapter 8, Fire Prevention and Protection as follows. Section 8-42, Duties of the Bureau of Fire Prevention, subsection B and D, as follows. B, A, strike, Deputy Chief, add, Fire Officer, shall be assigned in charge of the Bureau of Fire Prevention, add, under the title of Fire Prevention and Training Officer. Strike his.
Hold on. I gotta close the public hearing. Sorry, folks. You want me to read it again?
No.
Strike his, add, this assignment shall, strike, continue during good behavior and satisfactory service, and he shall not be removed except for cause. Add, be made by the, by the chief of the Fire Department. D, a report of the Bureau of Fire Prevention shall be made annually by the, add, Fire Prevention or Training Officer. Strike, Deputy Chief of the Fire Prevention Bureau and transmitted in the Fire Chief and Chief Executive Officer in the municipality. It shall contain all the proceedings under this code. With the statics, statistics, as the chief of the Fire Department may wish to include therein, the chief of the Fire Department shall also recommend any amendments to these ordinances, which in his judgment shall be desirable. Can we actually change that from in his judgment to their judgment?
Any objections to that?
Yep.
That's just to save.
No objection.
To save future. Not seeing you going anywhere anytime soon.
No, no, I, trust me, I'm, I'm with you on that. I've been cleaning it out of every document I come across, and clearly I missed that one.
So we, we tried to, when we read these, catch them same time, so.
Section 847, Routes for Vehicles Transporting Explosives and Blasting Agents, as followed. The route, strike, referred to Section 1270 in the Fire Prevention Code, for vehicles transporting explosives and blasting agents, shall be established by the Bureau of the Fire Prevention upon written application for the permit to transport explosives or blasting agents in the city. Section 848, Vehicles Transporting Hazardous Chemicals or Other Dangerous Articles, as follows. The route, strike, referred to in Section 2014 of the Fire Prevention Code, for vehicles transporting hazardous chemicals or other dangers articles shall be established in the Bureau of Fire Prevention upon written application for permit to transport hazardous chemicals or other dangerous articles in the city. Dangerous. It should be, it should be dangerous, yes. Sorry, can we strike, remove dangers and add dangerous articles?
Only amendment.
Yeah, for vehicles transporting hazardous chemicals or other dangers, should be dangerous articles. Are you all with that, Eric Smith?
Yeah, that, that should be correct. That's probably just a typo.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Grow. Section 849, Fire Lanes on Private or Public Property Devoted to Public Use. Strike the, add F. Strike F, Fire Lane, strike, referred to Section 2016 of the Fire Prevention Code, may be established upon written application made by the proper person stating the width and root of such lanes with specific description thereof. A nice move. Second. Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Majota. Discussion. I just want to say goodbye. Counselor Memard had to exit the meeting at this time. Counselor Gilman.
I believe these changes are very practical, and I think Chief Smith did a good job explaining it, so I will be supporting these.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. At this time, I'd like to take the next public hearing out of order. I would like to move to public hearing number four.
Discretion.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Public Hearing 2024, Number 29, Council Order 2014, Number 19, Majota, amend GCO Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-270, Parking Prohibited at All Times, and Section 22-291, Towaway Zone, by adding Seall Street, Sutherley Side, beginning at its intersection with Washington Street in an easterly direction to its intersection with Echo Avenue.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, I would just like to note that Seall is spelled incorrectly on here, and we need to correct that, that's all. And I will open the public hearing. Those who'd like to speak in favor?
All right, we're done.
We're sticking around. Nick, you grab the microphone. Name and address for the record, please.
Robert Dowling, 457 Washington Street, which is located at 457 Washington Street in the corner of Seall Street, too.
Thank you. Go ahead, continue.
We've been having a problem with traffic on our road, the corner of Seall and Washington Street. Going back two years ago, there was a major development right beside us, Dean Lane, where they put 10 houses, new houses, and all that traffic the past year because of construction, et cetera, comes down our road, which has kind of made one third more traffic. The road is 400 feet long. For two and a half years, we've had construction work, 20-ton trucks going up and down that road, and it's in pretty bad shape. So I want to get that explained. Lately, we've been having a problem with our parking. As you come around the corner of Washington Street onto Seall, we have one particular car has been affecting our traffic pattern on that road. That person lives up, maybe six houses up on Washington Street on the river. He has problems over there, so he's been trying to find a place to park his car 24 hours a day. He's chosen our road, which is 12 feet wide, and he's parking on Seall Street, about three feet off the road. The police department, some officer, gave him permission to do that. Well, part of our traffic pattern at the Riverdale Grange, because that's 457, we, some of our cars back out onto Seall, and that car is right behind two of our cars when we back out. We cannot back out properly. We back out, we have to come in, we have to back out, we have to come in, have to back out, come in, and finally go down the road. Saying that, during morning hours and evening hours, the traffic pattern is miserable. That car's there, a car's trying to come up the hill, or service trucks, that truck, a car has to stop because there's another car coming down. So we're asking the council to consider putting up no parking signs from the corner of Washington Street up to Echo Ave. And if you're going up the road, that's on the right-hand side. So, our point of view.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. This is Andrew Bonina.
Could you state that again? Sorry, we were distracted by your photo. And speak right into the microphone. Hold it right up.
Andrew Bonina, Riverdale Grange, Unit 4. I've been there for 15 years. And, yeah, back in what Bob said, we're both trustees, the oldest living people there. Not only does he park there, this particular person, he leaves the car there for nine, 10 days at a time, which affects not only Seall, Thornhill, Wantville, Echo, and Deacon Farm Lane. It's a cluster. As you can see in the picture, takes up half the street. There's kids around there, there's FedEx trucks, mail trucks. People are screaming at us, thinking it's our car. We have tried to talk to this person. I actually found a place from the park for free at the Riverdale, Rich Dale's, down the street. I know the owner fell on deaf ears. He continues to park there. We've never had a problem, ever, 15 years. We love our neighbors, keep the place meticulous. Just asking if we can just, it's just going to take up, it's just two properties, and they have parked, they have plenty of parking inside their home, so it's going to be just from Seall to Echo. Just two signs, no parking. Call it a day. Thank you.
Thank you. Whoops. Not yet.
Hello?
There you go.
My name is Kathy Davis. I live at 457 Washington Street, Unit 5. And my entrance to the condo in my parking space are both on Seall Street. And I've been there about five years, and I've had free access to my parking space at all times. Easily come in, easily go out. But since this person has parked there, I managed quickly to back into him. So my driving, perfect driving record for the last 40 years is now back to square one. So I am hoping that you'll agree that a no parking sign or a towaway zone sign will be forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? I don't see anyone online. So we'll close. Any communications?
No.
Questions from counselors? I guess we don't have anybody to ask. I'm going to close the public hearing and take the committee report.
On a motion by Counselor Grace, seconded by Counselor Majota, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommend the city council amend GCO Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-270, Parking prohibited at all times. Then Section 22-291, Towaway Zone, by adding Seall Street on the Southly Side, beginning at its intersection with Washington Street in an easterly direction to its intersection with Echo Avenue, and I so move.
Second.
And I would like to add, that, any question? That this was recommended also by the Traffic Commission, and they felt that this was obviously the right thing to do as well.
Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Majota. Discussion. Counselor Majota.
I'd just like to, you know, thank you for sticking around. I know, guys, everyone's probably pretty tired, but I appreciate that. This was brought to me about a few months ago, and you can see how passionate they are. And you have the proof right here in this picture that it does make parking, driving incredibly unsafe. You know, it can mess with people's sightlines while driving, going up, you know. The picture doesn't do it justice, but that you are going up the hill, too. So, again, just for the safety of the residents, for protection of, you know, the cars, you know. If someone's backing up or going for it, you can easily nick this car. We don't want to do any damage. And, you know, I just have a feeling that if I can have your support for this, that'll be great just for the residents and for the safety. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nolan.
So, we have so many different issues and requests, people looking to do things for no parking and so on and so forth. Judging by the report in the Traffic Committee, the work by Counselor Majota, and no knowledge of the area. I mean, I remember when it was the Grange Gourmet, they had the best Bull Clinton in town. It's tight up there, and we don't really know what happens unless people ask us. So if anybody ever has an issue with stuff, let us know, because we're more than happy to work with you. We have a process, it's fair. It doesn't take away from people, it's there to help people. And thank you for coming tonight and sitting through the time.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to give particular thanks to Counselor Majota for being responsive to Ward 4 constituents and bringing this forward to us tonight, Bob and Andrew, and also Kathy. I'm sorry about your driving record. It's going to have to take a little while to get that back to where it needs to be. I grew up on Guyav, so I'm familiar with the area, and people drive so fast on Washington Street. And I know this spot doesn't affect that directly, but when you're coming off of Washington Street quickly, it's a sudden, wow, there's a car right in front of us. So I also want to say that ultimately, it's not about this car, right? We're moving parking from that side. So if you have people over at your parties, you don't want to be parking there yourselves or your friends or things like that. So just, but it's the whole section of that street, not just that person. So I appreciate that you've tried many ways to work neighborly, if that's the right word. But this is the right thing to do. It's a tight street, and I hope that it gets, the sign goes up in a month, I think 30 days from our vote. So, good luck.
Counselor Grow.
I'm going to support this, Frank, because obviously it's clearly an issue. I'm just going to point out that unfortunately, you're going to be in the hot seat for the near term in enforcing this by letting the police know if those cars remain there, because that's the only way we're going to find out. So it's going to have to happen. So pick up the phone. If you don't want to call, call Frank. I'll give you his number.
Counselor Gilman.
So I really appreciate this. I was a ward counselor for eight years, and I'm so, I'm so happy that Frank is just jumping in and getting all these good things done. I actually was part of the process of changing the speed limit there down to 15 and worked with the Traffic Commission to get that. So in looking at this, when you said that it's only 14 feet wide, that is just a problem when you have a car that's that wide taking up that. It's not even real safe for emergency vehicles. So there are many reasons why this is important, and totally appreciate you all staying here so late and working with your wonderful ward counselor, Frank Majota. So thank you.
I just want to let you know that there's actually a 30-day period before these take effect, so you can't quite call, even though some signs may show up before that, which may be a deterrent in themselves. You'll have to wait before you can report it. Sorry. I know you'd like to have it there tomorrow. And I apologize for not moving you to the head of the queue of the public hearings. I should have done that right away. And, and so, if we're done with discussion, we shall have a vote. No, it's not roll call. Nope. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. And I would like to make a motion to reconsider, so that you understand that that means that nobody can take this back.
So moved.
Second. All right. A motion made by Counselor Grow to reconsider, and seconded by Counselor Worthley. And all those in favor?
No.
No.
Oh.
Roll call vote.
All those opposed? No.
Oh, all those, right, thank you. That's why we do a roll call vote, don't we?
Do we do roll call on this?
I think we do roll call on these.
Sorry.
That's right.
You got to watch the sausage be made.
Yeah.
All it, what this does is, within the 24-hour period, anybody who votes in favor could say, oh, I want to revisit this. This removes that.
We're not going to do that, though.
Just to give you some assurance that it's written in stone.
So the word "no" is okay on this part?
Yeah, we vote "no" on this to say.
Okay, the motion, on the motion to reconsider, Counselor Nolan.
No.
Counselor Worthley.
No.
Counselor Benson.
No.
Counselor Gilman.
No.
Counselor Grace.
No.
Counselor Gross.
No.
Counselor Grow.
Normal-sized "no."
Counselor Majota.
No, and thank you.
The vote is zero in favor, eight opposed, one absent. The motion fails.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you all so much for coming. You all have a good night.
All right. Now, back to public hearing 2024, 028. Madam Clerk.
Public hearing 2024, number 28, CC number 2024, number 15. Counselor Grace, amend GCO Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-270, Parking Prohibited at All Times, and Section 22-291, Towaway Zone, Regarding Angle Street and Western Avenue.
Wanting to open the public hearing? Those who'd like to speak in favor? Sure. Counselor Grace, you want to speak in favor?
Yes, please. Basically, one of the things that needs to be done, regardless of anything else, is that the, there's conflicting ordinances on the books right now, where it's towaway zone for the entire street, but then it's no parking except for one small section of the street. So that in and of itself needs to be fixed. But I'm taking it further in keeping the parking in the small section. In the past years, it has been used for 10-minute parking for the Visiting Nurses Association, and I'd like to have it changed to just parking. There's, you know, there's enough space there for a couple of small cars or maybe one SUV. It's not a lot of space. There's very little difference, if any, to having multiple cars parked there for 10-minute increments or having one, two cars parked there for hours at a time. Zero difference whatsoever. Did a site visit with the Traffic Commission on this, and they were unanimous that, yes, it makes sense. It does not cause any issues. There's plenty of room there, so that's it in a nutshell.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor or in opposition? Do we have any communications, Madam Clerk?
No.
Questions from the counselors? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. We have the committee report.
Yep, I'm going to read some committee reports in parallel. I believe they all come to the same term for a vote. Without any problem, can we vote them all three as read? Any objections?
No objection. Very good.
On a motion by Counselor Majota, seconded by Counselor Grace, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, and recommend the city council amend GCO Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-270, Parking prohibited at all times by deleting Angle Street, both sides from Western Avenue to Middle Street. On a motion by Counselor Majota, seconded by Counselor Grace, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council amend GCO Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-291, Towaway Zone, by deleting Angle Street, both sides from the intersection with Middle Street to its intersection with Western Avenue, with the exception of an area on the Southly Side which allows 10-minute parking. On a motion by Counselor Majota, seconded by Counselor Grace, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommend the city council amend GCO Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-270, Parking prohibited at all times, Section 22-291, Towaway Zones by adding Angle Street on the Northerly Side from a point beginning at its intersection with Middle Street to its intersection with Western Avenue, Angle Street, Southly Side, from a point beginning at 55 feet from its intersection with Middle Street to its intersection with Western Avenue, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Grace. Discussion. Counselor Majota.
Just want to say I fully support this. As a former Word III counselor, I'm very familiar with this, and thank you for just finishing off and putting it in the net. So, thank you.
Counselor Nolan.
And again, this was, as explained by Counselor Grace, was approved by the Traffic Commission, and this is something that has been talked about for a while. I'm glad to see it finally happened. There was some discussions back when Frank was there and some different issues and some different conflicts, and I'm glad to see this get taken care of because it just makes sense. Thank you.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes, I just want to give credit to Counselor, sorry, Counselor Grace. I'll give you, I gave you credit last time for the last one. I know that this has been a long time coming. I think the word is stick-to-itiveness. I'm impressed. And I know you've been working hard on this for a long time, so good luck, good job. I'm sorry I'm bringing it to us and getting the vote of the Traffic Commission and Ordinance Administration Committee, and I'll be joining them in support.
Counselor Grow.
Yeah, I want to appreciate, or show my appreciation for you cleaning up the ordinance language. That is unfortunately something we've seen a lot of, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to take on East Main Street next, if you could. Thank you very much.
Counselor Gilman.
I'll be quick. I agree with what everyone said. Thank you so much, Marjorie.
And if you guys are here for this, I apologize for not moving you forward also ahead of time. Sorry. If I had known that the first one was going to take so long, I would have brought you guys ahead of everybody. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The ayes have it? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider for the same purposes that we did on the last one.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
A motion made by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Grow, on a motion to reconsider. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Nolan.
No.
Counselor Worthley.
No.
Counselor Benson.
No.
Counselor Gilman.
No.
Counselor Grace.
No.
Counselor Gross.
No.
Counselor Grow.
No.
Counselor Majota.
No.
Vote is zero in favor, eight opposed, one absent.
Gilman made the motion. And again, I like to, it's going to take 30 days before it goes into effect, just so you know. So, thank you, and I'm going to start charging counselors for breaking speakers. As we, as we blew out a few in the, in the senior center. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing 2024, number 30, CC number 2024, number 23. Counselors Nolan and Gross, amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 21, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article 4, Repair of Private Ways, Section 21-83, Funding for Approved Construction or Repair, Subsection A, Regarding Municipal-Owned Abutting Lots.
Open the public hearing, and I will be speaking in favor. I'll be speaking to this. This came forward as we've been working with some betterment, private road betterment projects, and the question was asked, does the city contribute their portion on a lot, on their abutting lots? And it was unclear whether or not they did, and I, and Counselor Nolan and myself thought that that was patently unfair, that the residents should have to pay a share and the city should not. So however they worked that out in, in the treasurer's office, now the city will have to share the burden on any lots that they own. And there's been a, a pre- And, and there's been a, a pre, pre-existing situation that happened on Apple Street where the city did pay for their section in front of their, the, the property they have there along that long stretch by the playground. So that's the purpose of this, is just to make sure that the, the city carries, pays it, its own weight on the roads, as well as we're asking all the abutters on these private roads to show them the cost of paving them. Many, oh, Counselor Nolan.
I, I do want to add that this was done with the administration and with their blessing. So it's not a sneak attack. It's something that we've discussed and they're, they're willing to take on.
And actually, legal did help craft the language. Opened it. Vote in favor. Vote in favor. Speaking of, anybody else want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in opposition? We have no one online. And do we have any communications?
No.
Do we have questions from the counselors? Counselor Worthley.
Yes, thank you. So firstly, thank you for bringing this forward. I heard what you said, and it makes perfect sense. I want to make sure I heard it right. The city is not going to charge neighbors or butters for the portion of a project that includes municipal land.
Oh, the city, if there's 50 abutters and the city's one of those abutters, they pay 1/50th also.
Hey, the city.
The city is responsible for one, they probably won't be paying themselves. They'll just reduce.
Right, 49 would be paying in that scenario.
No, all 50 will be paying. The total, let's say it's $200,000. There's 50, it's $5,000 apiece. The city has to pay their $5,000 too.
Or just not.
Or reduce.
Right.
The loan order.
Right, okay.
Correct.
Well, I wonder, and I appreciate that the administration's supportive of this. It went through legal. There's three sentences here, they all seem to, maybe it's my understanding, right? We're adding, include, hang on, let's just read this. I want to make sure we're clear so future councils, future mayors don't interpret it differently. The total cost of the approved permanent construction or repair work shall be paid by the abutting owners. The amount to be paid will be divided by the number of abutting parcels, including municipal-owned abutting lots. Including, right, the cost of municipal-owned abutting lots.
That is new language, remember.
Right, it just doesn't, it doesn't seem to say what you just both said. I support what you're trying to do. I just feel like the language doesn't do it. The private abutting lots shall be assessed their portion of the cost beginning July 1st, 2024. So that would be, we got to change that date?
Oh, we're going backdated, retro.
Okay. The city shall be obligated to pay, so that last sentence clarifies everything. But I just feel like the including municipal-owned abutting lots feels like we're adding the cost to the neighbors versus taking away the cost.
No, we're not. We're just making sure that the neighbors know that.
I get what you're trying to do.
That they, that the private abutting lot shall be assessed, they shall be assessed. I mean, the city won't have, they don't get a tax bill, so they can't be assessed.
So I understand exactly what you're saying.
So then that's what this says.
The amount to be paid will be divided by the number of abutting parcels, including municipal-owned abutting lots.
Do you have an amendment or something you want to make on this?
I'm just trying to understand it. The amount to be paid will be divided by the number of abutting parcels, including municipal-owned abutting lots. So we're dividing it by the lot that includes the municipal lot too.
Correct. But you can't assess the city because the city doesn't pay taxes.
I get it.
So that's, it's the word assessed is the, is the key of that statement. So.
Is the word assessed in that sentence?
Yes. Private abutting lots shall be assessed their portion of.
Oh, in the second sentence.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the city shall be obligated to pay for its portion of the cost.
I get the third sentence, clarifies it all. I just feel like the second, the first sentence, it's.
It's just an addition. It's a comma and an addition, including municipal-owned abutting lots. That's all.
I won't argue with it. If you're happy with it, I'm not going to argue with it.
Any more discussion? Counselor Gilman.
I'm going to just complicate it and just mention one thing that I need clarification on. Please. So if on Apple Street, if the length of the property for the playground is almost 2/3 of the street, I believe what you're saying here is that that should be one portion of all of the property.
Correct. If you want to address frontage, that would be a totally separate amendment to this ordinance, but this does not address that.
Okay, I'm not in a position to make that change tonight. But I, I, but please, I'd like, I'd like to speak.
I encourage you to look at the ordinance.
I, I understand the ordinance. I understand the ordinance.
I mean to make the change.
Okay, but I'm just, but I'm just stating that if the city owns almost 2/3 of that street, it just seems, it just seems really unfair to the abutters. But I understand, I understand the wording of the ordinance. And I'm just making that comment because it's a big, long street and we, and we own that in front of that property. But I, I understand.
It's not part of this ordinance.
It's not part of this ordinance.
So we're discussing this tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
That's a completely separate issue, just like the golf club only paid three abutting.
I totally understand.
So that, that is something, if you would like to please go into the ordinance and address the frontage issue, that would be great.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Have a great night.
All right, I'm going to close.
Close the public hearing? Committee, committee report.
On a motion by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counselor Grace, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommend the City Council amend GCO Chapter 21, Streets and Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Article 4, Repair Private Ways, Section 2183, Funding or Approved Construction or Repair, Subsection A, as follows. A, the total cost of the approved permanent construction or repair work shall be paid by the abutting owners. The amount to be paid will be divided by the number of abutting parcels, add, including municipal-owned abutting lots. The private abutting lots shall be assessed their portion of the cost beginning July 1st, 2024. The city shall be obligated to pay for this portion of the cost of this project, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Grow. Discussion. Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. I will be supporting this because it goes in the right direction. But I also want to acknowledge that Counselor Gilman asked the right question, that we need to address that too in terms of lineage.
I understand, but that is not part of this motion.
I'm supporting it.
It's all Robert's rules. This is the motion. Thank you.
I'm giving her credit for raising it.
I understand, but let's move it on.
I support it, and I appreciate Counselor Gross and Nolan bringing this forward. Thank you.
More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Council vote the warrant for the November 5th, 2024 state election.
Just moved the adoption, correct?
Correct.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the warrant for the November 5th, 2024 state election.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Nolan. Discussion on the motion?
Can we take any names off we don't like?
No.
Isn't this the federal election as well, not just the state election?
All the state election.
At the time.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Counselor Memart.
Okay, individual counselors. Discussion, including, well, we're not going to have any appointed counselors. Any, any of our appointed counselors have anything that they'd like to make? It would be good to get it right on the agenda for those of us who are members of committees. So just give me a heads up. I know you are Val Scotts, is also as well as Jason. So do we do this by roll call? And who do we have? Counselor Memart is gone. Counselor Nolan.
I don't have any requests from the mayor. I just want to point out that this Sunday is Magtoba Fest on Lexington Avenue. It's a great chance to come out and see some great cars. A lot of good bands will be playing, street performances, food trucks, local vendors will be selling. It's just a, an all-around wonderful time. The weather should be great. I look forward to seeing all of you.
Counselor Worthley.
Either or, I'm not going to use more time of this meeting to talk, but I just want to ask if Ms. Poria would like to share how big a responsibility you have with all the ballot work you need to do and any help that we could provide. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Oh, that's all right. We have a lot of ballots to get mailed out. So for the sake of anyone listening or who listens to this recording, we received the vote-by-mail ballots at the end of last week. So we have, actually, we mailed out Ward 1 today. And we are working very hard to get those 6,000 and counting ballots out.
How many?
What's that?
How many other?
There's about 6,000. And there will probably be more. The deadline is October 29th to submit an application. So we're working hard. The, the city clerk's office staff is working very hard to get those out. We're actually closed for general business tomorrow so that we can just devote our time to getting those mailed. We are open for the receipt of referendum petitions. The deadline for that is tomorrow for a certain ballot item for 2026. So yeah, if counselors are able to pop in and give us a hand, that's fine. If you can't, I totally understand. But we're, we're busy right now.
Especially those who advocate for the voting.
And then Grace, last question on this. Does all the other operations in your office stop when you're doing this work?
Absolutely not. Everything else goes on full steam ahead as well.
So I just want to card us all, and any of you at home, just lend a hand if they can.
Tomorrow, the office is closed.
Tomorrow.
But in general, elections just are added on to everything else that we do. That's it for me.
Thank you. Counselor Benson.
Thank you, and thank you, Clerk, for all of your work with our election in a very important time. And you're being part of our process of our democracy. I have one thing for the mayor, but first, something that has really been nagging at me in the last few weeks is this truth decay that is happening in our community. And it's spread from our national to our state and to our local. And this idea, and I've spent a lot of my time academically and in self-education looking at the collapse of nation-states, erosion of democracies, erosion of civil discourse, and what I just said, truth decay. I'm concerned about this in our community. I am deeply concerned that this idea that truth and facts don't actually matter. And you are entitled to your opinion, but you're not entitled to your own facts. And I just, thinking about this and out loud and just having this deep concern that I think in our community, and then recently coming into this new as a, as a first-time counselor and seeing previous, seeing when I came in, seeing this, this idea of nonpartisan, this idea of people coming together. I just feel like this, if this continues, we'll see a further erosion of civil discourse in our community and a further erosion of our community as a whole in this ugly division that has really continued to spread like a virus in our community and beyond. And it's, it trickles on social media, but now it's, it's going beyond that. And it's something that I really, it's really been nagging at me. And I will leave it at there, at that, rather. But I, also, just for a request to the, to the mayor and the administration is looking at our radar speed sign for Derby Street and just telling residents just slow down in the area, slow down, and also looking at upping some speeding enforcement and presence for law enforcement down there. Thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
Yeah, I just have one request. I request that city administration outline and explain to us the federal government's, AKA, Secret Services protocol that requires cities and towns hosting private fundraisers for vice presidential or presidential candidates to assume the expenses incurred for security operations. And in our case, it was $7,202 for the caravan last Saturday. So whether you're Republican or Democrat, it doesn't matter. I feel the same way, regardless of my political backing. And, and I just think that it's just unfair to our city to have to incur this. So I, I would like to just see this in terms of where this, and where this requirement comes because it's a lot of money, in my opinion.
Counselor Grace.
Firstly, I want to second what Val said. At no point in time should we be incurring the costs for any private political event in this city. If there's enough money to spend $100,000 to meet somebody, there's enough money to pay them for their own security detail. Secondly, this, I just want to go on record as saying that if somebody is unhappy with the decision that a counselor makes, you should be talking to the counselor. At no point in time is it appropriate to harass or corner or antagonize a family member of any of, of us sitting up here tonight. It is not okay. And thirdly, my request to the mayor is to get an update on my request from the mayor from last time regarding school zone signs down near Newell Stadium. It has the support of Detective Castro and of Bob Ryan of the Traffic Commission to get school zone signs down there, to get people to slow down. And that's about it. Thanks.
Counselor Grow.
I want a third, Counselor Gilman's request to the mayor. Just adding to that, that I would, I would add to that that I would hope that the administration would seek any possible reimbursements that might be available to the city. We charge our residents for road closures for events like Middle Street Walk, for football games. We, we charge almost $8,000, $9,000 for police overtime to monitor elections. These are all things that, that actually benefit the community. A private event should carry its own costs. And we, if we can seek reimbursement, we should be seeking reimbursement.
Oh, Counselor Majota.
No requests to the mayor.
I'm good. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Grow, seconded by Counselor Nolan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.